Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Twenty-one is present, you have form. I'm sorry, Alderman Grass. Twenty-one present, you have form.
A form being present, let us pray. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We'll dispense with line item three. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Aldermen from the twenty-third.
We're trying to get all the agendas together. As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest.
Any other special guests? Aldermen from the fourteenth.
I don't have a special guest, however, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the victims of the earthquake in Syria and Turkey this morning. Thank you.
Everyone could please stand and bow their heads. Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Today's my special guests, I'd like to have Janika Hayden and Will Palmer, who are interning with the president's office for the spring semester. They're both master of social work program at Washington University. Will is in his first year and Janika's in her second year. They'll be helping us conduct policy research and prepare for the transition to fourteen wards. So if you would please welcome them to the Board of Aldermen. And one other announcement, coffee and doughnuts are on the way, they just have not made it to the Board of Aldermen quite yet. It's been my number one question this morning. All right, approval of the minutes. Aldermen from the twenty-fifth. Aldermen from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, February third, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt our meeting minutes from our February third, 2023 meeting.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Aldermen from the ninth, that we approve the minutes from February, Friday, February third, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
Please dispense with line item seven. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight, nine, and ten. First reading of board bills.
We have none.
Reference to committee.
We have none.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of huts with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 120 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderwoman Peel, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expend the funds to the extent received, containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of streets with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 132 introduced by Alderwoman Davis and the following all the persons: Vacaro, Tyus, Switzer, Peel, Boyd, Howard, Evans, and Bosley. An ordinance authorizing honorary street name Nancy and Ken Cranberries Way pursuant to ordinance number 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of Washington Avenue and North Leonard Avenue and run east on Washington Avenue to the intersection of Washington Avenue and North Teresa Avenue. Board Bill 143 introduced by Alderwoman Peel, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in areas adjacent to City Block 388, an irregular portion of Born's Hospital Plaza from King's Highway East, 625.31 feet, an irregular portion of King's Highway, beginning 133.96 feet north of Born's Hospital Plaza, extending northward 125.8 feet for aerial and subsurface, one, I'm sorry, 4.55 foot by 32.08 foot section of Born's Hospital Plaza near the center line of the street, beginning 249.96 feet east of King's Highway in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing in accordance with Charter Authority and then conforming with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 158 introduced by Alderman Odenberg, pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 5800 block of Wall Street between the intersection of Wall Street and Hampton Avenue and Wall Street and Clifton Avenue, 6700 block of Eichelberger, 5100 block of McCaslin Avenue between the intersection of McCaslin and Itasca Street and McCaslin Avenue and Delore Street, 5200 block of McCaslin Avenue between the intersection of McCaslin Avenue and Delore Street and McCaslin Avenue and Wall Street, 7000 block of Rose Drive between the intersection of Rose Drive and McKenzie Road and Rose Drive and Kingwood Drive and Wilmore Road between the intersection of Wilmore Road and Westway Road and Wilmore Road and Jamison Avenue. Board Bill 166 introduced by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the 15-foot wide unnamed street located between City Block 9112 and 9115, beginning at Hall Street and continuing east in accordance with Charter Authority and then conforming with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 171 introduced by Alderman Colder, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to grant a non-exclusive access easement to Herwick family LP containing the severability clause. Board Bill 187 introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on a 3800 block of Virginia Avenue, 2600 block of Winnebago Street, 3100 block of Osceola Street, 3500 block of Iowa, 3600 block of Iowa, 2800 block of Miami, 3900 block of South Compton, 2600 block of Osage, 3700 block of California, 3500 block of Michigan, 3500 block of Nebraska, and a 4000 block of California between the intersections of California Avenue, Osage Street, California Avenue, and Gaskinay Street, and 3900 block of South Compton between the intersection of South Compton Avenue, Osage Street, and South Compton Avenue and Keel Cook Street. Board Bill 180 Committee Sub as amended introduced by Alderwoman Iglesias, an ordinance related to the establishment of right to counsel for tenants facing eviction or equivalent proceedings, a mechanism to provide counsel for all tenants in covered proceedings, a requirement for owners, agents of owners, and landlord to disclose their tenant, certain information regarding the right to counsel and covered proceedings, a plan for oversight and implementation for counsel and persons in covered proceedings, and a requirement for an annual report including the severability and emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Aldermen from the tenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of board. Hello there. Sounds like a bad movie. All right. Madam President, I make a motion to suspend the rules to move the following board bills to the perfection consent calendar. These are Board Bills 132, 143, 158, 166, and 171.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Aldermen from the tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the sixteenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear all of the numbers that he read.
I'll be happy to repeat them for you, Alderwoman. Gives me a time to wake my throat up here. 132, 143, 158, 166, and 171.
I have no objections.
Do we have a bingo?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Aldermen from the tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the sixteenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the perfection consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, we need a roll call, sorry. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Grass. Twenty-three aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to suspend the rules to place the aforementioned board bills on the perfection consent calendar. Aldermen from the tenth, you are recognized. Alderwoman from the first.
I just wanted to give you a list of things I want to take off of the perfection, I'm sorry, the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, Board Bill 162, which is on the perfection consent calendar, and I guess we can wait until we get to the third reading, and I'll tell you those that I want.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Aldermen from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to move that we suspend the rules to move the following board bills to the regular perfection calendar. These will be Board Bills 120 as amended and Board Bill 187.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the eleventh, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the regular perfection calendar. Any discussion? Hear a motion for previous roll? Hearing no objection, motion passes. Aldermen from the tenth, could you repeat the board bills that you just said?
Luckily, I threw it through recycling can. So for the board bills that will be moved to the regular perfection calendar will be Board Bill 120 as amended, 120AA, and Board Bill 187.
All right, motion carries. Report of special committees.
We have none.
Perfection consent calendar.
Give me just a second. Board Bill 189 introduced by Alderman Kohn. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works improvement program at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, providing for inconsistent of capital improvement projects as more fully described in the attached Exhibit A entitled Fiscal Year 2023 and 2024 Project List, containing the severability clause. Board Bill 132 introduced by Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Vacaro, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Peel, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Evans, and Alderman Bosley. An ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Nancy and Ken Cranberries Way pursuant to ordinance number 68937, which shall begin at the intersection of Washington Avenue and North Leonard Avenue and run east on Washington Avenue to the intersection of Washington Avenue and North Teresa Avenue. Board Bill 143 introduced by Alderwoman Peel. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in areas adjacent to City Block 388, an irregular portion of Born's Hospital from King's Highway East, 625.31 feet, an irregular portion of King's Highway, beginning 133.96 feet north of Born's Hospital Plaza and extending northward 125.8 feet for aerial subsurface only, 4.55 foot by 3.208 foot section of Born's Hospital, I'm sorry, Born's Hospital Plaza near the center line of the street, beginning 249.96 feet of east of King's Highway in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing in accordance with Charter Authority and then conforming with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 158 introduced by Alderman Odenberg, pursuant to ordinance 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 5800 block of Wall Street between the intersections of Wall Street and Hampton Avenue and Wall Street and Clifton Avenue and 6,000, I'm sorry, 6,700 block of Eichelberger, 5,100 block of McCaslin, between the intersection of McCaslin Avenue and Itasca and McCaslin Avenue and Delore Street, 5,200 block of McCaslin Avenue between the intersection of McCaslin Avenue, Delore Street, McCaslin Avenue, and Wall Street, and 7,000 block of Rose Drive between the intersections of Rose Drive and McKenzie Road and Rose Drive and Kingwood Drive, Wilmore Road between the intersections of Wilmore Road and Westway Road, Wilmore Road and Jamison Avenue. Board Bill 167 introduced by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in a 15-foot wide unnamed street located in City Block 9112 and 9115, beginning at Hall Street and continuing east in accordance with Charter Authority and then conforming with Section 14 of the Charter of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 171 introduced by Alderman Colder, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, I'm sorry, yeah, Board of Public Service authorizing and directing the Mayor and Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to grant a non-exclusive access easement to Herwick family LP containing the severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Aldermen from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, I move that we adopt our perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Aldermen from the tenth, that we adopt the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Aldermen from the ninth.
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to add my name to Board Bill 132.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. This is perfection consent calendar. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderwoman. Thank you. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Grass. Twenty-six aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to adopt the perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 137 Committee Sub as amended introduced by Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard, an ordinance to provide for independent investigation of law enforcement misconduct and use of force incidents and repealing ordinance number 71556 and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance that reconstitutes and provides staff support for the civilian oversight board and provides coordination and staff support for the detention facility oversight board created under ordinance number 71430 and establishing the division of civilian oversight within the Department of Public Safety and authorizing the establishment of the public integrity unit directed by the circuit attorney in the city of St. Louis.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 137 Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move that we perfect Board Bill 137 Committee Sub as amended.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the Aldermen from the ninth, that we perfect Board Bill Number 137 Committee Substitute as amended. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. I just, I have my binder here, this is a little joke between me and my colleague Alderman Odenberg, I learned how to have my binder from him when I first got thrown off the porch up here. But just to make everyone familiar, refamiliar rather, Board Bill 137 Committee Sub as amended is our best attempt to try to now re-engage civilian oversight here in the city of St. Louis. As you know, Board Bill 47 Committee Sub as amended that passed out, came up under a lawsuit and then up under an injunction. And so what we're doing now is repealing that one, bringing forth this one, immediately and directly addressing the two findings that the judge found within their board bill, within this new board bill, and hoping to reinstate civilian oversight here in the city of St. Louis. And I just want to touch on one thing before we get started, hopefully not too long with it, but I've been hearing some rumblings, again, of some of the create a confusion that some people do out in the community that this is against the police. Civilian oversight is not against the police. As a matter of fact, my relationship, I'm proud of that I've dealt with the police, with our St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department. Because of the history of policing in our nation, a lot of the citizens in the twenty-sixth ward are not comfortable calling the police, so they call me and I call the police for them. Because of the relationships I've built, I make it personal. On January 27th, because of a dispute that was happening with my neighbor, a bullet came through my house. A bullet traveled through my living room, through my hallway that me and my family traveled through, through my steps that me and my, that my children go up to be in their bedroom. My daughter was there, thank God, my husband was there, and she didn't have to go through that by herself. But I'm using that as example, when that happened, I called the police, and the police responded. I want to just publicly now thank Captain Christie Marks for her response and the way the fifth district responded, and then came back days later for the investigation to pull the bullet out of my wall. So this is not against the police department. This is not us against the police department. This is about strengthening the relationship between the community, our communities and our citizens that have fought for civilian oversight in the city of St. Louis for over 20 years. This is about moving it forward the best way that we see that we can do it and come to a happy medium. I sent my colleagues an email, and I want to read a part of it just again so people are clear and they don't confuse people, continue to confuse people about what civilian oversight really is. Civilian oversight means to our respective constituents, for them to strengthen the integrity and public confidence in the criminal justice institutions by promoting transparency, fairness, and public accountability, and by conducting thorough, impartial, and independent professional standards inquiries into misconduct and use of force incidents. So this is not about policing that we value and sometimes quite frankly take for granted here in the city of St. Louis every day. This is about misconduct and use of force incidents and having a landing place where our constituents, our civilians here in the city of St. Louis can feel safe under the capable and, in my personal opinion, overly qualified leadership of Commissioner Matthew Brumman and a civilian oversight board who I'm going to say it one more time. We, for the first time in the city of St. Louis since this fight began back with our clerk, Alderman Kennedy, and then was carried on by our colleague Alderman Pam Boyd, and then I'm so grateful to be able to pick up the baton now. We, for the first time in that fight, do not have civilian oversight here in the city of St. Louis. This is our attempt to reinstate civilian oversight in the city of St. Louis. And with that, I yield to any questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Aldermen from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to commend the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth on this. Other than the fact that she did mention Captain Marks and us in the second district are still a little bit bent out of shape that you took Captain Marks from us because we had a great relationship with her. I know that it's tricky to go back and clean up legislation that you've previously passed. You spend a lot of goodwill and political capital to try and clean up things. I did it with the air quality bill, I know that you were with me on that. Would the Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth please yield for a question?
Would the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth yield to a question from the Aldermen from the twenty-fourth?
Absolutely.
Aldermen, you may proceed.
Thank you. So this is, this matter is currently in litigation?
Yes.
And there are settlement discussions ongoing?
I'm not sure about settlement conversations. What I know is that to date, there hasn't been a trial set, so the idea was to do it, repeal that one, get it, you know, in order with SB 26 and the Officers' Bill of Rights, and now be able to pass it this way.
And then who drafted this bill and brought it to you to file?
I wouldn't say somebody drafted the whole bill because I got on their nerves changing things, so, but I will say probably the key person, the key group with any other legislation here in the city of St. Louis is the city council's office.
So, so, and the city council's office is representing the city in the lawsuit?
Yes.
And so they brought, substantially, they brought this bill, and they're hoping that this will help in the ongoing this will help in the ongoing litigation, I imagine.
Well, ongoing litigation to a place where hopefully that litigation won't count because we won't be litigating over Board Bill 46, seven, Committee sub anymore.
So this amendment essentially just addresses the issues that the judge had on his initial findings and then we'll be at the status quo again.
This bill. Mm-hmm. Yep, the bill does that. And there are a few other tweaks that came through conversations with community advocates. I think you were on the call. There were some concerns about the districts. We changed those. Some other things that made sense to go ahead and change now since we had the opportunity to address the two things, the only two things that the judge found merit in, in the lawsuit.
Thank you so much for yielding, and I have no further questions. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I want to commend the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth for the incredible amount of work that has gone into this. And as with the previous board bills, I would love to be added as a cosponsor to this vital, important work. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, and if you would, please add me as a cosponsor as well. Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I want to also commend the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth on her work that she put into this. I just want to remind the board that, that these are the stumbling blocks that happen often when we don't come to the table with the police department and the Police Office Association and the union members of that association to fully work together. The proponents of this bill were warned that there were illegal items in it and that most of the subject matter in it would get contested in court. And the judge proved us all right. So I think going forward, it's important that we put our fists down and we try to have an honest conversation around oversight and police accountability as we move forward in the city. I will remain in opposition to this bill.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, seconded by the alderman from the ninth, that we perfect Board Bill number 137, Committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Gross. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Gross. Twenty aye votes, three no votes, two abstained, and one voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth on the perfection of Board Bill number 137, Committee substitute as amended.
Board Bill 183, Committee sub as amended, introduced by President Green and Alderman Con. The proposed bill amends and revised ordinance number 62885, which imposes a one-half of 1% sales tax, known as capital improvement sales tax, on all retail sex, sales tax made in the city of St. Louis, which are subject to taxation under the provisions of section 114.010 to 11, I'm sorry, to 144.525 of RIS Act of Missouri, providing for the allocation of such funds for the purpose of funding capital improvement, including allocation for ward capital improvement, so that the allocation for ward capital improvement for each ward shall be made based upon each ward's needs. Needs is to be determined pursuant to annual analyses conducted by the St. Louis Development Corporation of the following seven data points for each ward: median household income, poverty rate, educational attainment, unemployment rate, vacant parcels per ward, street miles, and ward acreage.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 183, Committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we perfect Board Bill 183, Committee substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the alderman from the ninth, that we perfect Board Bill number 183, Committee substitute as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, President. This is a board bill to help with the transition to 14 wards and is trying to provide equitable distribution of ward capital funds moving forward.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh.
Alderman, I'm behind you. Will the alderman from the twenty-fifth yield for questions?
Would the alderman from the twenty-fifth yield to questions from the alderman from the ninth, or seventh?
Seven.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman, I have a few questions about this. I wasn't able to attend the presentation, I guess, in the committee on this, and I've read the slide deck and read the bill and just had a couple of questions, to the extent you can help me answer these. One, I know one of the things we're doing here, it's a 70/30 sort of split, 70% equal 30% by needs. And I want to get into what those needs are here in a bit. But before we even get to that point, we talk about this unencumbered, these unencumbered dollars. Do we know roughly what that balance is? I think it was in the slide deck, but I don't.
It's roughly 12 million.
12 million, okay. So 12 million, and that would get divided under this proposed legislation. Would that get divided under the same criteria as future ward capital dollars? That's 70/30?
Correct.
All right. Looking at sort of the, before we get to the list of needs, I want to talk about sort of who's going to do the ranking and scoring. Some of this is basic data that's, you know, publicly available, but it looks like we're giving this to the St. Louis Development Corp to, I guess, come up with these percentages and this scoring. Is that your understanding?
The data would mostly be compiled by the planning department and then would be then ranked by SLDC and referenced to BPS.
Okay, so when we get to the data, so medium household income, that's obviously a, medium household income, poverty rate, educational attainment, unemployment rate, those are all, that's Census Bureau data. That's, you know, that's easy. Vacant parcels, LRA, makes sense to me. Street and ward acreage, planning, okay. I guess, capital dollars flow through the Board of Public Service. Why are we giving this to the St. Louis Development Corp to compile and score as opposed to an agency in city government that already deals with capital improvements?
I would suspect that that's because the SLDC already has scorecards for various incentives and provides data regularly to this board. And also, the planning department somewhat falls underneath the, you know, banner of SLDC. And so, planning would be the one that's compiling a lot of that data for SLDC to refer over to BPS for ranking.
Okay. This is something that really concerns me. Not that I have a problem with the leadership of the Development Corp. I work with them on a regular basis, but we've given them a lot of authority. And to give them even more, you know, power over ranking and scoring ward capital, when frankly, that's not their area of expertise. I understand the planning department might be housed over there and work closely with SLDC, but a lot of these funds are infrastructure projects and they flow through BPS. BPS is responsible for the contracting, for the bidding, for the design often, for the construction management. Why we're giving this to this quasi-governmental agency is something I don't understand and frankly is concerning to me. Would you agree?
So the money is not going over to SLDC. It's just the rankings that would be generated by planning and SLDC would then be provided to BPS.
Yeah.
So the money actually still stays within the purview of, you know, city government.
No, I understand that, Alderman. The money stays in ward accounts, subaccounts, or whatever we're calling them. I'm concerned that we're delegating this planning and scoring to the Development Corp as opposed to an agency in city government that has more familiarity with infrastructure projects, which is what I think is the intended purpose of these funds. I guess that brings me to my next point. This, these categories, one through seven, medium household income, poverty rate, educational attainment, unemployment rate, vacant parcels, street miles, ward acreage. I understand how we'll, I guess, how those are calculated. Are these weighted? So is medium household income given in terms of the scoring for the wards? Is that given more, I guess, weight than ward acreage and street miles, which are at the bottom of the list?
If I recall the presentation correctly, all of the, and I'm looking it up currently, but I believe all of these are equally weighted.
Okay.
They're all equally.
They are equally weighted? All right, that's good to know. Do we know how these categories in particular were developed?
Through conversations in the president's office, along with the, along with the committee, is how these were determined. That's my understanding.
Okay, was there any consideration given to, I mean, service requests?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, there's one other thing that I guess I'm just confused about. I think the alderman from the sixth tried to clear this up for me. If you're looking at, it's the bottom of page two, for the, I guess, for projects that are sort of in the design phase, but money hasn't been allocated yet, what is the deadline? I see, I guess, is April 18th of 2023, is that the cutoff for unencumbered funds that would then flow back to the big pot and divide it up?
Correct.
So what is this April 1st, 2024 deadline? On the very bottom of the page. Money not encumbered as of April 1st, 2024.
On page two.
Yeah, isn't this page two? Yeah. Page two of five, very bottom, like literally the last line. If they're not, it says if they're not encumbered as of April 1st, 2024.
Sorry, that's on page two of mine. I just found it, Alderman.
Yeah, sorry. I guess it's technically page three if you count the cover page.
I believe that's to allow time for funds that didn't meet the definition of unencumbered to be allocated.
Can you, all right, so in practical purposes, if I've got a project in the design phase now, like today, that we know is, I guess, still going to be under design come that April 18th deadline, does that mean they basically have until the following year, until April 2024, to encumber those funds?
I believe, yeah, in that example, that sounds correct. If in design phase, yes.
Okay. All right. I mean, something's got to be done with ward capital. I sort of understand where we're headed here. I don't agree, and I guess this isn't really a question. This is just more my comment, Alderman. Thank you for answering my questions. I'm not sure I agree with these seven categories. I mean, this is, these are capital dollars. They're supposed to be for nuts and bolts of the city. You know, I've represented a ward for years that's geographically very large. It is a higher-income ward in some respects, but it has tremendous capital needs that often go unmet because of its size and because of, you know, some of its, it's got a lot of major thoroughfares and most of downtown. And I feel like it's going to get further left behind under this framework. So this is not something I can support. I also don't really think the 28 of us should necessarily be making decisions for the new 14. Many of us are not going to be here. I think dividing future ward capital equally and leaving it up to the new legislators to decide a system to further subdivide that, whether it's based on need or size or anything else, is appropriate. But for us to be rushing this through now, when frankly, the fiscal year doesn't start until July 1, the new board will have plenty of time to make these decisions. So if this was just a simple, we're going to divide it by 14 and let the new board figure it out, I could get, I could get behind that. But as written with these criteria that I believe have been sort of hastily thrown together with giving more power to the Development Corp over this process, of which I think they should have nothing to do with, I'm a no on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes. I was opposed to this in committee, which you're very much aware of. To say that my neighborhood should be punished because the people in my neighborhood are a little bit more, I guess, income-wise, but they're not, we're not rich. We have roads and needs that are not being met because we don't have the money even enough now. And anything to take away money from my ward, I will oppose adamantly, which I did in the, in the committee hearings. I was the only one opposing it in the committee hearings. So apparently, it got this far. It should have never came out of committee. This should be divided equally like the voters back then assumed what was going to happen 30 years ago when this was done. I didn't support that in committee. I don't support it here. I would support an amendment that makes it equal. Thank you. This is my comment. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to echo the sentiments of my colleague from the 7th. I think that this body has probably already given SLDC too much authority over various matters that we should be attending to. I've had my constituency, actually, some folks tell me if it passes this way that they will leave the city of St. Louis because they don't think that this is a fair thing to be doing. I think if you look around most wards in the city, it's pretty clear that we don't have enough revenue coming in to tend to all the projects that need to be gotten to. I know every, I'm sure all of us could talk about some roads that need repairing, some sidewalks that need repair, parks that need improvements, lawns that need tending to. And to, to vote for something that would take away money from my constituency is just not something that I can do. So I will be opposing this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 14th.
Yes, I'm opposing this for two reasons. I'm not running, but I will be a citizen in the city of St. Louis. And as many of us know, our services have been deferred for, you know, since the pandemic took place. As about to be a citizen of St. Louis, I don't want my services cut any further. I would like to have some more things done in my neighborhood and in my ward. And I think that this, as agreeing with the alderman from the 7th, I think this is premature. I think that leave it for the seven or the 14 wards, the elected officials that will take office on April 18th, I think would be a more prudent way of dealing with this. I think that at this point, we are way ahead of the ball, and I appreciate, you know, the preparation that's went into this. But at the same time, as a citizen, and as you may not know, this was voted on by the voters back when this was instituted. So you're usurping the power of the voters along with all of this, and I just don't, don't agree with it, and I'll be a no on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I certainly agree with most of the folks that have spoken here, and they've spoken very succinctly on the need for this body to determine what budgetary items the new Board of Aldermen of a lesser amount, when and how those funds will be divided. The Alderwoman from the 14th is very correct in that this was a sales tax ballot initiative. And while be it the ballot language may not have said they will be equally divided, that is certainly the sales pitch that was given. is certainly the sales pitch that was given. This happened in the late 90s under Mayor Freeman Bosley Jr., and this was in an effort to ensure we could get sources for the critical infrastructure needs of our city. And at the time, the way to sell it to the aldermen and to the residents was, well, half of what's generated from this sales tax will be divided equally among the wards, and you can determine the infrastructure priorities that are associated within your given wards. Now, there may be some inherent problems with that statement in and of itself, but working in conjunction with BPS and the Street Department, I would argue we get it right. We get it right most of the time when it comes to the infrastructure as it's equally, the infrastructure costs as they are equally divided. I would also agree that I think it's important that we do have to do something here in terms of housekeeping, because we will be in April going down to 14 wards. That's why, for the purposes of that clarity, I would like to introduce amendment number one. So, Madam President, I move that amendment number one to Board Bill 183 Committee Substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 16th, second by the Alderman from the 23rd, that we introduce amendment number one to Board Bill number 183 Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. May I proceed?
You may proceed.
Thank you. This amendment is about as simple as it can be, colleagues. This amendment basically strikes page two, line eight, and page five, line 918, which effectively removes the entire calculations and the categories that we are deliberating on, and simply says, we will go to 14 wards, and the revenue credited and allocated to the subaccounts there being, for each ward in the city shall be credited and allocated in equal amounts. So it's effectively what we have today, just we're dividing by two. Now, there's merit in this conversation. So I persuade you all, let's take care of the housekeeping, divide this by 14, knowing that there's only going to be 14 chairs in this room, and let's let that body have a thoughtful conversation around what is in here. Also, I thought the Alderman from the seventh brought up some good points, the Alderman from the 24th, around SLDC's decision analysis. I do think data should drive some of this conversation, but I think it's incredibly important that the next board have this conversation. I'll yield for questions.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board. I rise in support of this amendment. Under the calculation of a 70-30 split, some of the wards where I represent now will be getting less funds, ward capital going forward. And I've been an alderperson now for two years, and I can tell you that there is not enough money in ward capital to fund the basic needs of the ward I represent now. So my constituents are not in favor of taking away their funds. I do believe that any conversation about paving and about future planning for the streets of St. Louis, as so much of that funding does come from ward capital, needs to be based on what our professionals in the Streets Department rank as these are the roads that, you know, need the most urgent work, and make a plan that goes forward for paving and repair of streets. It is silly that aldermen have so much input in that now. But what this bill does without the amendment is it doesn't fix the problem that we are all dealing with, that there isn't a plan for the streets in St. Louis, and aldermen are expected through their very small amount of ward capital to fix all of these issues. For example, when I started as alderperson, the 13th ward had $400,000 of outstanding sidewalk work. That's more money than the 13th ward is allocated every year in ward capital. Not to mention that the ward capital also needs to cover things like dumpsters, trees, traffic calming, speed humps, street repaving, street striping, speed hump painting, I could go on and on and on. I have had random fences get hit in the ward and need to be repaired quickly. There simply is not enough money in the 13th ward ward capital right now to move it anywhere else. And I understand that the Streets Department should be making decisions about how streets are paved, but I don't think this bill fixes it. I think it just changes the problem as opposed to fixing the problem. What would fix the problem is more money in our budget for streets, trash containers, trees, all of that. But I think because that's not what we have in front of us, the conversation needs to change where this is done second, and if appropriate, after there is a dedicated funding stream in the city of St. Louis for what our wards so desperately need. So again, I support this amendment, and I hope my colleagues will also vote yes on this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I too rise in support of this amendment. My colleague from the 13th has found out in two years what I discovered in the last 20 years, that you don't have enough money to run your wards. I typically came down here and 20 years ago, and was spending into next year, into next year, into next year, all the time, running deficits and trying to keep things up. Is my ward more affluent? Probably not. It's a middle-class ward, but people work hard, they do pay their taxes. I know everyone pays taxes all across the city. We have many, many needs that are not addressed properly. She is also correct, our colleague from the 13th. The decision on what should be done should be more in the hands of the administrative people, you know, taking the days of, hey, hi, I'm your alderman, would you like a new alley? Vote for me, you know, those are the things that, you know, you grew up with in the 60s and 70s, and you heard all these stories. That's not the world that actually is going on here. We need to get this out of our hands and into the administrative hands, and keep money in the wards. And in the past, I, and maybe this has gone by the wayside, but there was times when I had particular projects in my ward, where I would go to colleagues in surrounding wards, or any wards around, and see if they had money that they could transfer. I mean, this was a time when we all tried to work together to make the city better. So that, I believe, still should be a policy that was not really a written policy, where we, if you have a, all of a sudden, I have a surplus, is there somebody who needs some money? Let's work it out together. I'm not opposed to whatever happens next year with the new 14, if they decide, I think that should be their decision. If they want to make it 80, 20, 70, 30, 60, 40, that's something that, this will be their board, and I think they should have that decision in their hands. Thank you.
Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support of this amendment for many of the reasons that have been set forth already. I think we need to be cautious when we're treading on the way that we may handcuff future members of this body. I think ultimately that this should be their decision, and as the alderman from the 10th stated, and the alderwoman from the 13th, I think we need to be moving further and further away from, each alderman is making the individual decisions on which alley to repave, which street to repave. We have an entire department dedicated to some of these things with experts in it, and we should really be deferring to them. The idea that someone who reaches out to me specifically and says, I'd like my road repaved, and I could say, sure, let's repave this road, and that may happen at the expense of someone who does not reach out to their alderman, who doesn't have a relationship with their alderman, particularly as we move from representing, you know, 13,000 people to 26,000 people. It's going to be harder and harder for each individual resident to have that face-to-face contact and to truly know their alderman, to run into them at the store, to run into them at the restaurants, and to have those discussions. I think we need to be relying more and more on the expertise that we have in our city departments, and we need to be moving away from, frankly, an archaic model of how we allocate funds to different projects. I commend the Alderman from the 16th on bringing this. I will certainly be supportive of it. And as the Alderman from the 10th stated, if the next group of 14 individuals who comes through here wants to split up the money however they want to split it up, they can have that discussion then. But I think for now, we should hold the line and hold the status quo for them. And with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, I come from a unique perspective in that I'm the only person that was here when we passed this board, when we passed the sales tax in August of 1993. If you go back in history, we got some historic names, and we also had some historic fights. The bill had tried, the taxes had gone three or four times before and could not get passed. Every time they brought them out, North St. Louis killed them under the guidance of Bill Clay. We absolutely killed them. We voted against them because we did not believe that the current administration had our best interest at heart. The current administration had promised that when he got into office, he was going to open up Homer G. Phillips, and he did not keep his promise. And once he didn't keep his promise, he lost his relationship with North St. Louis. When Mayor Freeman Bosley, the brother of our current alderman, came into office, he had always opposed him, and our comptroller was the father of our mayor. So the comptroller and I went and met with the new mayor and said, don't pass these taxes. This is not a good idea. First of all, they're sales taxes, they are regressive. And we always pass things, and we do it for sales taxes, because homeowners will rise up, and it's always easier to pass sales taxes on people who can't fight you back. So we were opposed to it. But he got out there, and he passed them anyway. We lost our relationship about that because I actively opposed it and said, we can find a different way to do it. And also, he passed the exact bill that the person before him had written, and didn't change any kind of thing to try to get it to be something more fair. Speed forward to 2001, and the easiest way to steal ward capital was you picked up the 20th ward, and you moved it to South St. Louis. You called the 10th ward the 20th, but you really created a whole new 10th ward. And everybody talks about, oh, the 20th ward is down. No, they created a whole new white ward at the expense of North St. Louis, when they didn't have to do that. And they pushed, they could have just pushed everything a little bit further south. So they took, in the last 20 years, $10 million from what was the real 20th ward of ward capital. People worry about how much money I have in my ward capital. But because they've done that, and some of the press have covered it, I actually went back and I pulled some more records for you to show you how many times that I have tried to get things done. You all show this appreciation for the administration and the staff. The problem why we're not getting things done is not the aldermen, it's the people who are in charge of getting it done. When I got here, the Alderman from the 25th was upset about, he had been trying to get trees for four years. That wasn't the fault of the alderman, it was the fault of the administration and the people that work under him. When you give them more control, then they use it to be vindictive and not get your stuff done. I have been trying to get, I have a million dollars extra sitting trying to get curbs done. I just found some more. When the press asked me, guess what? I showed them my stuff. I showed them how I've been writing, trying to get it done, trying to get it finished and completed. But there's always some reason why they can't do it. So giving it to more of this, to the administrations or the people that the administration controlled is not going to get it done. But the other thing that I rise for, opposed to all of this, is because we took this out to a vote. And I've been telling everybody, they sold it the way it is. They sold it that we would divide it up into 28 wards, and this is how it was. And what happened is, we, what happened, we used to have a large pot of money to pave the large streets. When Francis Slay became the mayor, he took all that money. If you go before Francis Slay, you will see that that money got, they paved Broadway, Kings Highway, all the way down, Grand, all the big streets got done. But when he got into office, he took that money, and he put it into retiring debt, because that was a loophole that had been stuck in that original, not ordinance, but the original tax that we voted on. And so he used that to spend that on downtown and around the convention center. So all of a sudden, we didn't have that money. He also, on more than one occasion, or at least one, took money which was really in opposition to what the actual bill says, and used it for the budget, which is not supposed to be done. Twice, Lyda Cruzen took our money. Well, once she took it, and once the former president, Louis Reed, took the money because we were fighting the airport, and put the board bill on informal, and let that go, her bill go into law, which took our money. That was not supposed to happen. When I left here, between the time we got it passed, we collected our first money in 1994, in about February. And we collected this money, and we got that money spent. But we got that money spent because there used to be five employees up at BPS instead of two or three that serviced us. So they would get our stuff turned in, and Mayor Bosley got it spent, and Mayor Harmon got it spent. And there was no backup unless you were saving up for something. And you did have to save up for some things, and you worked with the people. But the point is, we took it to the voters, and they voted on this. If you think it's something that needs to be changed, why don't we just wait, let it come back, and then let the new group of people send it to the voters? Let's tell them, let's sell it, like we did. We sold it. If you can't sell it to all parts of town, then it's maybe not a good idea. But we continue to let the administration attack us as though we don't do something right. And then now, we're like, well, we shouldn't be able to decide what streets get paved? Why not? I did. When I got in office and we, we got our money, I would pave a whole neighborhood. It wasn't who I liked or whatever, I paved the whole neighborhood there. There's a record of that. Pinrolls, then I did Kingsway East, then I did Kingsway West. We did it, we spent the money, we had done that, we had, we did lighting, we did, everybody got lighting. We were on curbs when they moved my ward. That's why curbs irritates me, because we were on that, because I'm getting people killed, or we got people who got the rebar in the curbs, because it was concrete, and they're poking people's tires. So to say that the aldermen shouldn't be able to have a say, who, who, more than us? We hear what's wrong with our community. I don't know how you guys do it, but I hear. So I go out, and I do not do, oh, I like you and I don't like you. I don't even know what world that is. I also was starting to do alleys. So I don't know what world it is, because I might not like one person on the street, but I might like five people on the street. So do I say, I'm not doing it for one person? I don't do that. And I have a record. We can go and pull it. Everything that I've done, I did in my whole ward, including speed humps, which I was a proponent of and wrote the bill for, is that every neighborhood in my whole ward that I currently represent has speed humps, and it's only three or four streets in each one, because each year, we do more and more speed humps, and we, I introduced the board bills, we got them done, and we did. So I don't know who it is, back in the day, we're not back in the 20s, where you go back into a back room, and they say, well, I'm not going to do yours because I don't like you. I don't know any alderman like that, okay? I don't like you, I'm going to make you go through the process, but the process was put before us by the voters. And it always interests me that all the people down here who say they trust in the voters to elect them now want to go around the voters to change it. That is not what we told them, that is not what we promised them. I want my $10 million back that you stole, to tell you the truth. I want it all back. That's what I came back here to get. Give the 20th ward, the real 20th ward, our money back. You stole it. I don't care where you get it from, the Rams or whatever, give it back. I can prove it. I've been tracking this stuff forever. Let me tell you what else. All the things that are in the mayor's, I'm sorry, a lot of the things that are in the president's bill already was required. Talk about being in subaccounts. That's required under the original ordinance that we passed. And in fact, in 2001 or '02, I asked about the subaccounts and said, well, as we have this money and we're saving up for things, don't we have some sales tax interest? They said yes. I have a printout from back in 2002 to show you when the wards, when the 20th ward was still in North St. Louis, of the interest that we got while we were waiting. When I came back in 2013, I said, hey, what happened to all our interests if we're waiting for things? And I was told by the treasurer, who's now the mayor, I don't know, the comptroller said, maybe the treasurer changed it. But somehow, while we were gone, they stopped following the law. In many, many parts of it, we also had money for a tax, tax for parks. I got the printout, for those of you who wanted. I've been keeping the capital improvement sales tax by major parks. It's embarrassing. From 1994, and I just got through 2018, Forest Park got $31,369,726. The South St. Louis parks, which was Crondelet, Tower Grove, and Wilmore, has 5, 8, 10, like about $12 million. And the two North St. Louis parks total, for all those years, got a total of, and that would be Fairground and Oak Fallon, got a total of a little over $5 million. The president is not wrong in thinking that it is unfair the way it's done. What she's wrong in, to me, is that she's not taking it back to the voters. She, it does need to be some kind of redistribution. need to be some kind of redistribution, um, especially based on the largeness of the wards. But it does not need to be done by us. Even if I come back here, which I believe I will, I would always promote, "We sold this to the voters. We got to go out there and tell them why this is fair." And that's not, and then show how much we spent, and what happened when you take a ward that was successful and you move it instead of just pushing the wards back. We have to be able to rely on the voters, the very ones that voted us into office, to also to be sophisticated enough that they can understand when something is fair or not, okay? And they may say no. Then you got to go back out three or four or five times like they did before. You got to have somebody who was charismatic enough as being the first black mayor that, uh, he pushed that. Um, when I show him these numbers now, he knows that there were some mistakes made, okay? There were some mistakes made in passing somebody else's board bill and not sitting down with people and changing it. So, again, I would tell you, the president is not all wrong in what she's trying to do, a fairness thing. It is wrong, to me, to change the, uh, the people who voted for something, and we sold it to them that way. And then we are so important that we don't think we should have to go back out. No, we don't have to. We can do it. It is a mistake. It was a mistake for the Mayor Bosley to pass this bill in the first place the way it was. If he had waited a little bit and sat down with some people, he could have made this a better bill. He didn't. Um, but we did send it to the voters. So, for us now to say, "Oh, well, we can't, um, we can't, as aldermen, we don't know how to put, uh, allot that money." Yes, we do. I do. Maybe you don't. I do. I just need to be able to, um, get people to, um, spend the money. So, once I allocate it, then why is Rich Bradley sitting on something for 10 years or nine years? That's happening for a reason. So, right before the new mayor came in, then he got all nervous and said, "Well, let's sit down, and let's talk about your curbs, okay?" Well, let's sit down and talk about it. But why hasn't it been done? And letter after letter after letter after letter. I got these people for nine years who've got holes punched in their tires. But then, the press, the, the mayor's office tries to promote, Sharon Tyers has all this money sitting up there. The American newspaper tells lies because, uh, of, uh, the current mayor and their relationship with them. I have been trying, and the press knows it, because the press has asked me, and I have provided the letters. I have been trying to get my money spent. So, how does this help? If we give it over to the administration, how does that help get it done? Because that's what we're here for. We're here to get things done. We're not here to just say, "Oh, we can't do this." I can make the hard decisions. I don't have speed humps on my own street, because my street is closed. And everybody who has closed streets, I told them, "You're at the end of the line about street, uh, speed humps," because we need to do the people who don't have, uh, uh, closed streets. That's maybe something that's not maybe politically smart, because that's your own street. But that's fair. We close streets. We left streets open. We do speed humps. We decide about, uh, paving, okay? We do everybody. Somebody, and I always tell my ward, somebody's going to be first, somebody's going to be last. If I start in Pinrolls, the next thing I project I start, I'm going to start in Kingsway East. The next project I start, I'm going to start in Kingsway West. So, somebody's always going to be first and last. But it's not because I can't make the decisions. I resent every time I sit down, um, to talk about spending our money, and they bring up dumpsters. Dumpsters have never, ever supposed to have been paid for by the alderman. And because I've been here so long, I can show you the dumpster things where the mayors paid for them and put them in. Because when I got here, we only used to get $77 million. I'm sorry, $77,000 a year. That was your money that you had, and usually you spent that on sidewalks or fuse paving. But the city did everything. The reason why they voted to give the wards money was because we wanted to be able to get other things done in our ward, and they weren't being allocated. So, you got the alderman to be on board, and a lot of other people, and I wasn't. You can go back there and look. I still didn't like the sales tax. I said, "Let's do a tax that's more fair." But it got passed. We started getting that money. I can show you how much money we got. When I got back here, I was surprised at how little money we got compared to what we used to give, get. But again, that money got spent. You didn't have that money sitting up for two, three, five years. That money got spent. It stopped getting spent, because the administration didn't want it to be, and then they could make this whole thing up about the aldermen don't want, uh, their ward capital get spent. Yes, you do. Why wouldn't you want it? That is the dumbest argument I have ever heard in life. That doesn't make any sense at all. I want to get the money spent as fast as possible, because everybody's happy then. Then they're not wanting to leave the city. Then they're staying. You're not losing your population. But if the mayor can make it appear to be, and the administration, that it's the alderman, instead of the press looking at who controls those people who are supposed to do it, and go back and look, why we only have two people assigned to us to handle our ward capital when we used to have five? What happened to that? Why? We still have the same sized city. Now, we have not lost one mile of the city, but we lost people who could support, given us support. Um, so, those are the things that are misinformation that are out there, is that the aldermen don't want to do X, Y, Z. We want our stuff done as fast as possible. One of the aldermen who was, uh, that represents one of the parks had them go, uh, one of the people went out, one of the departments went out and fixed a swimming pool and charged it to his account without his permission, didn't even talk to him about it. That wasn't his priority. Is that what we really want to happen? We want them to go out into our community and say, "This is important"? They don't come out and meet with your constituents. They don't know what's important to your constituents. Um, the president was one of the people on board of saying that the mayor should veto my, uh, speed hump bill. She and the director of operations. Well, that didn't go well with my constituents, because I knew that they wanted them. There's hardly anybody in all the places that I've put speed humps that said, "Oh, we didn't want them." You have one or two. One, we have a process in which we sent out a petition. I sent the petition, and it says I support or oppose on each and every street, so people got to weigh in. But the president doesn't know what's now called the first, that used to be the 20th, that's going to be the 12th better than I do. Neither does the mayor and administration. I know that, because I'm out there, and I've been out there for 30 years representing this community. Um, so, when I hear that we can't make decisions, we absolutely can. And if this whole thing of sending it over as an SLDC for some kind of formula, that just really perplexes me, because this is the same SLDC that, um, under the Krusen administration, we got the okay for hardware store. We already own 75, 65, 70% of the land, and they haven't done one D-A-M thing, not one damn thing at all, okay? So, they haven't proceeded with this. They set on it. They say, "What do you want, Alderman? Finish purchasing the land and start demolition." Demolition, when you prepare stuff to be, uh, acquired by a developer, if you have it in pristine condition, it's a lot easier. I am not in awe of this administration or the people who were here before her even. I'm not in awe of Rich Bradley not getting my speed, I mean, my curbs done. That'd make me have any, uh, confidence in him to say he can get it done, because directors are appointed by the mayor. Let's say this again. Directors are appointed by the mayor. When the mayor gets in office, there are 14 directors, and the 14 directors report to the mayor. So, when your trash doesn't get picked up, the street director was appointed by the mayor, and even though the street committee continues to say, "Let's stop doing recycling, so we can pick up more trash and yard waste", because the mayor wants it, the director goes out there and still does, uh, recycling, and you're taking, um, people away from picking up trash. That is ridiculous. Recycling is not more important than picking up trash or yard waste or bulk items. But we have that done, because that's what the mayor wants, because a few people, and I know they did it, because they, uh, uh, they contacted me and said, "I want my recycling back." But, uh, the street director told me, "Well, what we do, we, we have somebody go out, and if, uh, because the recycling is contaminated. It's contaminated." And so, she told me, "Well, we have people go out, and if it's contaminated, we just tell them to put it all in the trash." Well, then, why am I paying for recycling? Because much of the city is not getting clean recycling. Again, I'm a recycler. I still rinse everything out, take all the labels off. I, but I would also take it to the fire department or to some other place, or we used to have a blue bed, being just like the one that sits at our desk, was bigger. I still have it. We could do recycling that way. Saying that we have, uh, officials that can do a better job, when they haven't proven they can do a better job, doesn't make it so. I want to know why anybody would tell me, "Well, officials can do it better," when they haven't proven that they can do it better. Get the money spent. Get the contracts out. Get the contracts out for, for curbing. Get it done. Get the sidewalks done. I still don't have a report about what happened to our sidewalk money. I'm the chair of streets. Some of you all have reports, but many of us don't, still don't know what happened to our money. How does that make me want to have, um, administrators administer something that is not in our best interest? I oppose this amendment. I oppose the president's entire bill, although I do believe it's, uh, something that you should, she could send out to the voters and try to sell it and explain it. But I do not believe that if we have a hard-fought battle in which we had people pass it, and by the way, it wasn't late, uh, 90s, Alder, I'm sorry, Mayor Bosley got elected in April of 93, with, by the way, the real 20th ward delivering the votes for both he and the mayor's father, the comptroller, they were losing until the 20th ward came in, and we delivered the big one-two punch, which is why I believe we were moved the next time there was redistricting, because they wanted to suppress the black vote. We were not a low-voting ward. We were a very high-voting ward, and the highest-voting Democrat, Democratic ward in the city. So, um, I can't support the amendment, and I can't support the board bill, and I, it is not something that we have to get done. All of this rush to get everything done, because we're going to go to 14, makes no sense at all. We're, we're going to go to 14. We've been knowing this for 10 years. We had chance and opportunity to plan this and meet with people, and now this rush, "We got to get it done," and it's by people who don't know what they're talking about. And it's also by the people who passed Proposition D and R. In case you don't know, we had an election in September in which we spent over 300, about $300,000 on an election that was needless, made no sense. All of you all know, I have sent you emails, if you've been here any time at all, talking about how really irresponsible Proposition Ds and R was. And I wrote up all the reason, and one of them was, when you have two candidates, it makes no sense to have several elections. That makes no sense at all, and it just wasted a lot of the city's money. And this, what we're trying to do now, makes no sense at all. It's not going to be something that we can't address when we come back. Everything does not have to be addressed. If it had to be, we should have done it before now, because this thing got passed before I came back to the board in 2012, and they couldn't get it out of the board when I was still on it. I would have never gone to 14. If you guys look at, if anybody looks at how the wards are drawn, it is a catastrophe for North St. Louis, and we're going to have, and I'm not talking about the black people that white people pick and say, "This is a black alderman." That doesn't make a black ward. We're going to have four and a half black wards out of 14. That is not equitable, and we need to go to court. And when this is over, we need to go to court and sue this board and the city for equitable map, and also for equitable map at the state level, both the state rep and the state senate. It is all ridiculous, and it is no way in the best interest of anybody. In case you all haven't looked, they took the fourth senatorial district and put it right up at the top of the city, and then made the rest of it all in one district. That doesn't make any sense. We have just totally ignored compact and contiguous, and had, we have a political agenda, and people yelled and said, "Well, the former president said he, uh, he drew, uh, redistricting, so that he could control it." That's not illegal. What's illegal is that he, we have now reduced the amount of black proportion of, of aldermen. And the alderman from the third on the floor said, when we were meeting over at SLDC, "We've never had 14. In 2001, we were supposed to have 14 black wards, and that didn't happen. And since that time, we've continued to withdraw services, take the money away, say, 'Oh, the alderman can't do it, and the administration can.'" But then, why isn't the administration writing me letters saying, "Hey, Sharon, you got this money. What do you want to do with it? Hey, Sharon, you got this money. Let's spend it." And that's not what happened. What happens is, I'm writing saying, "Hey, Rich, when are we going to get this thing done? Hey, 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 Kent, when are we going to do this? When are we going to pave streets? Uh, hey, where's the budget?" It's not the other way, and that's what the press needs to know. It's not them saying, "Why don't we get things done"? It's them holding it up, and us taking the hit and the fire, and not having the knowledge to be able to fire back. I've been here long enough, I can fire back. I've been here long enough to know what actually happened. I've been here long enough to say, "This is not right." For those of you all who believe that the voters have the wisdom to elect or unelect us, they also have the wisdom to pass something, and let's just put it back out to a vote of the people, and let's tell them what we think is the best way to do it, and then we sell it. Sell it. If we're back here and I'm back here, then let's sit down and work out something, something that is fair, but not to override the will of the people. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, so per this, uh, amendment, uh, in the major parks part of it on page two, we're going to be breaking up, uh, the major parks capital improvements account in the six different subaccounts, and those accounts will be, uh, divided up by the percentages, by percentage, by the acreage of the parks that are, uh, divided into these six subaccounts. So, with that, um, you know, Forest Park is 1,300 acres. Uh, Tower Grove is 289. Crondelet is 180. Fairgrounds is 131. Wilmore Park is 105, and O'Fallon Park is 57. So, just to make this quick, uh, out of a million dollars, just, uh, Forest Park would get $630,000. Tower Grove would get $140,000.
Alderman, I do want to make sure that the, um, debate right now is pertaining just to the amendment to-
That's on your amendment.
-to make it equal instead of divide it 70-30.
I'm sorry?
Uh, the amendment before us is to-
Right.
-make the funding equal. So, if you could stay focused on that, and then we'll debate the full bill after we vote the amendment up or down.
We on the amendment. This is in the amendment. The amendment one, it's on page two.
I think that's what's being struck from it.
Not the way that it's given to me. It doesn't, it's not struck and out. This is in bold.
I think, um, Alderman from the 24th is coming to assist.
Help me out right quick. Oh, well then, thank you.
Not a problem.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Then Alderman for the 16th, you are recognized to close on your amendment.
I think as an extension to the Alderman from the first's argument, that's what this amendment does. Amendment one before us, um, says, "Let's know we're going to 14. Everything's divided equally, and then let's figure this out and put it back to the voters with the new 14 chairs and the new 14 representatives, uh, in the next session." So, a vote in the affirmative, a yes vote on this amendment, says, "We have 14 wards. We're going to divide it equally, and then let's address it in April, when we all come back in a new session," and whoever the folks are in these chairs. With that, I renew my motion.
Right. It has been moved by the Alderman from the, uh, 16th, seconded by, I lost my second here, by the 23rd, um, that we adopt amendment one to, uh, board bill number 183, committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderman Iglesias. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Alderman Colder. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Grass. 18 aye votes, six no votes, and two voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion on amendment number one to Board Bill Number 183, Committee Substitute as Amended. Any further discussion on the full board bill? Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. I think after that amendment and the substantive changes made to it, that the Alderman from the 16th should become a co-sponsor and now carry the rest of the bill. But with that, I will, you know, close and renew my motion to adopt Board Bill 183, Committee Substitute as Amended.
It has been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 183, Committee Substitute as Amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderman. Thank you. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Rice. 19 aye votes, three no votes, and four voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 25th on the perfection of Board Bill Number 183, Committee Substitute as Amended.
Board Bill 130, introduced by Alderman Colder and Alderman Stevens, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement and the Board of Public Service Authorizing and Directing the Supplemental Appropriation in the amount of $30 million into the annual city budget established by ordinance number 71505, approved June 30, 2022, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023, for the deposit into the project fund of the City of St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation Leash hole revenue bonds series 2020 for continuing improvements to the Savanese Convention Center owned by the City of St. Louis, Missouri, and contained an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number 130.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move to perfect Board Bill 130.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 130. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. What Board Bill 130 does, ladies and gentlemen, is appropriate $30 million, that was part of the settlement negotiations between the city, the county, and the RSA for the RAM settlement funds towards the convention center expansion project. The RAM, the convention center expansion project, which was billed as a two-part, roughly $210 million project, of which the city and the county were going to split the cost at $105 million in each, unfortunately due to delays, particularly in St. Louis County with issuing its bonds, by the time they were issued, construction costs had skyrocketed, and unfortunately, we find ourselves in a scenario where there are not sufficient funds to complete phases one and two of the convention center expansion. What has been negotiated by the administration and the county and the RSA is to take $30 million off the top of the RAM settlement proceeds, which was roughly $519 million that we have to divide amongst the city, county, and RSA, take $30 million off the top towards the basically hole in the convention center's project. Now, this does not provide sufficient funding to complete phase two as originally contemplated, and our convention visitor center chairwoman, sorry, Director Kitty Ratcliffe explained, you know, basically, they're going to do a pared-down phase two. If they can't find another 70 or 80 million dollars to do the full-blown phase two, they've at least got this $30 million that can allow them to do some of the upgrades, which are upgrades to the facade of the building, a park on the west side of the building, and some other improvements, but it would be a considerably scaled-down version. Now, if we don't appropriate this money, it doesn't just flow to the city's general fund. If we fail to appropriate this by June 30 of this year, this money reverts back to the RSA. So the city will lose the money, it will just go towards the fund that basically operates the formerly Edward Jones Dome, now the dome at the America Center. Now, this is not a perfect scenario, but it's where we find ourselves, and it was agreed to by the parties, so I'm asking for your support today to appropriate these $30 million. I'd rather have them go towards the convention center expansion than simply flow back to the RSA. For those of you that haven't followed this closely, just so you know, in terms of the breakdown of money, the $519 million that was left after the attorney's fees from the RAM settlement, 250 of that's going to the city, 169 million to the county, 70 million to the RSA, which is responsible for the dome, and then this 30 million, if approved by us, to the CVC, otherwise, it will go to the RSA. I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 7th would yield...
The Alderman from the 7th yielded questions from the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Alderman, I'm feeling real old, I was here when they left that crazy loophole. If it doesn't approve, if the new football stadium is not the same as the new football stadium's 20 years from now...
Top tier, I believe, was the term, right?
There's actually me, being me, back 30 years younger, saying, this is a dumb loophole, and they're going to be back here, and everybody's saying, no it isn't, no it isn't, why are you saying that? But, and asking, why do we have all those lawyers that work in city councilor leaving this kind of loophole? So I've always thought that was done on purpose, which is why people say I'm easy on the RAM's owner, the current RAM's owner, he was not the current RAM's owner, he was, Georgia Frontier was the RAM's owner when we did this. So when you can talk about history, and you're still here 30 years later, looking younger than ever, by the way, then, so my question to you, first of all, I've always been appalled that the lawyers got more than the city. That is something that makes my heart sound like what happened, but am I understanding, is this 30 million coming from the city's money?
No.
It's coming from...
It's really probably, I mean, per discussions with the, I wasn't in the room when this was negotiated, but these funds would have either flowed towards the RSA or maybe the county. I think ultimately, the parties, or at least the RSA and the city, were on the same page that part of the reason we're in this mess is because the county took so long to issue its bonds on the convention center project while construction costs were skyrocketing. So this money, you know, this 30 million would not have gone to the city's chunk, it would have either gone to the county or the RSA, but as a part of the compromise, it's going to the CVC.
So the city keeps its original amount as a...
Yeah, the city's still getting its $250 million.
Okay, and the lawyers got more than 250, right?
Somewhere in that realm, yeah, they got a big chunk.
I never heard of such an agreement, okay? But of course, when the city councilor used to be an equity partner, that might have something to do with it. I never have understood why she was even in the middle of that, I wouldn't have touched that as a lawyer, I would have been like, nope, can't touch that, because I was equity partner over there, but okay, nobody else has problems with that, I do. But, oops, did I say that out loud? So the next thing is, so they just, when they put that whole deal together, they put this money aside for the convention center.
Correct.
So they kind of took probably some from the county, you're saying the city wouldn't have gotten any more.
My understanding is, as part of the negotiations, this was sort of mainly from the county's allocation.
So Kitty...
And they're sorry, there's also some argument, I mean, look, the RSA has continuing obligations for the dome, I mean, the preservation payments there are drying up, I don't remember if it's the end of this year or next year, but I mean, the 70 millions for maintenance for that building, and I'm sure they could use more.
I know, I met with Kitty back when we finally were paying off the dome slash football stadium, and we then gave all $300 million for the next 30 or 40 years, and only the Alderman from the third, myself, the Alderman from the fourth, Sam Moore, and then the former Alderman from the 21st, we voted no against that, because I couldn't see how finally we were coming clear, and I met with Ms. Ratcliffe and told her then, you will be back for more money. Oh, no, we won't be back for more money. I never even listened to that stuff anymore, okay, because after 31 years, I know they're going to be back, and if they find some more money that we have, they're going to be back with that. And I'm not saying that we don't need to fix up the convention center, and I thought it was coming from our 250-something, but since it's not, instead of going on and on about, no, I'm just going to be a present, because I just think we should have put that money into some development, so, but of course, putting money into development, when I think that, even when we allocate it, it don't get spent. So I don't understand, what are you doing over there magically that your money gets spent when you allocate it, okay? Because the stuff that's been allocated for the North St. Louis corridor, I put $5 million is sitting there of money that I put on the North St. Louis corridor to buy up the rest of the properties, so we can do the hardware store, but here it is, a year later, nothing's done, so you're doing something magic, so could you tell me what you do except for represent downtown, so those of us who live in North St. Louis can learn how to do that, please?
Alderman, it's a good point, I will say, they are swinging hammers, and the project is well underway, so I'm confident this 30 million will get spent swiftly.
And as I said, I'm just going to be a present, because Kitty told me that they wouldn't be coming back for any more, I didn't believe her, I think that was a wink-wink, so I'm not holding it against her, but until we get some things going in North St. Louis, I just do not understand how I stand up here and support downtown, when I've told the Alderman from the 5th, and I've had this conversation many times, a lot of that money that's being spent downtown was taken on the back of North St. Louis with block rent money, building the hotels, taking money that was supposed to be for North St. Louis, and guaranteeing the hotel that then went bankrupt, which we already knew it was, the tax abatements, the TIF, all of that, and then we can't get anything, and the things that we got done, people told me, oh, they wouldn't last, Snook's been open 25 years, Bank's been open 27 years, when you don't have anything and people build stuff, people will come, we actually are sitting here just sitting and waiting. So good for you that you can advocate for your constituency, I don't have a problem with that, and we do need a convention center, I know that, I just have a problem with the mayor's office not prioritizing North St. Louis at all, since she ran on, I grew up in North St. Louis, and she just, I just got on the floor and told about, in the 24th ward, they're buying out the people there, but not in the first ward. I don't understand the disparity from a black mayor, it's either her or the people around her that are very, very racist and ridiculous, so I am not going to vote, I'm going to vote present, now that you tell me it's not our original money, and good for you that you can get some money spent, not just allocated.
Further discussion? Alderwoman from the 26th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I just want to thank my colleague from the 7th for this, I would like to be added, but thank you, Madam President and members of the board, I would like to thank my colleague from the 7th for this legislation, you know, we talked about this a little while ago, about making sure that we talk about how we'll spend this RAM settlement money and through Resolution 171, we're going to have some public transparency and public conversation around that, but I am 100% in agreement with this legislation, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we...
Roll call.
Perfect Board Bill Number 130. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
24 aye votes and two voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 7th on the perfection of Board Bill Number 130.
Board Bill 64, Committee Sub as Amended, introduced by Alderman Con, President Green, Alderman Gunther, and Alderman Stevens, and ordinance approving policies and procedures in connection with the consideration of development proposals and containing the severability and emergency clause.
Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number 64, Committee Substitute as Amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move that we adopt Board Bill 64, Committee Substitute as Amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 64, Committee Substitute as Amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Bill 64 has had numerous hearings in the HUD's committee, it's with respect to streamlining some of the incentive process over at SLDC, creating transparency with some of the boards and commissions over at SLDC as well, and I guess of note for many of the folks that weren't a part of the HUD's committee meetings or listening in, the initial board bill also contained recommendations or a requirement regarding letters of support from the Board of Aldermen with respect to developments, that has been struck from the Committee Substitute as Amended, but substantively, this is providing a little bit more transparency to... But substantively, this is providing a little bit more transparency to our processes and reforming some of the structures over at SLDC and our processes here legislatively as well.
Need further discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to thank Alderman Cone for his work on this. There was a lot of discussion in committee. And one of the things that I forgot to do during that discussion was to add my name as a sponsor. So if I could please add my name as a sponsor, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 1st.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 25th yield?
The Alderman from the 25th yield two questions from the Alderwoman from the 1st?
Almost always.
All right.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Yes, I will.
Alderman, can you give me just an overview? I didn't get to see that because we're trying to get through everything from streets that we could. Could you tell me about what policy and procedures are being changed? Just a little synopsis, please?
Sure. So the board bill itself, the first section of it deals with transparency. So that is the section that basically requires the boards and commissions, the various boards and commissions over at SLDC and related boards to adopt using SLTV or, you know, an equivalent such as Zoom or Teams to record their meetings-
Great.
-and then post them online, which they don't do regularly currently. So particularly boards like the LCRA where tax incentives are debated regularly before they're brought over here to the Board of Aldermen, those will be more accessible to the general public. So that's Section 1. And then Section 2 deals with essentially the creation of a development report that has to be done with SLDC. This is something that SLDC supported. So it's not replacing the work that they're already doing. Essentially, it's augmenting some of that along with requiring, the board bill also requires conflict of interest disclosure statements from commissioners over at SLDC. Some of the commissions already do that, but this would be part of a report that's generated by SLDC and provided to the Board of Aldermen when submitted as part of a board bill. And I know Alderwoman, you and I have had those conversations before in the past, how those should be included and exhibits that are provided to the clerk before filing. So it does address some of those concerns. And then the additional section, which was the letters of support, during the committee hearings, we had numerous conversations and questions around the requirements there. And then also concerns with respect to mandating, you know, what an alderperson could share. So that, that section was struck from the board bill and the committee substitute that's before us now.
Okay, yes, thank you. All right. I agree with everything except for the striking of the automatic support, and I will tell you why. There has been a misinformation from the mayor's office about how they got to be in there. In fact, I was there, I was picked by the mayor, the comptroller, and the former president to be a mediator between them. So we went to meetings. Everybody keeps indicating that that came from the former president. If you go back when we passed this board bill, you will see me specifically saying that it came from the comptroller. It did not come from the former president. And it's a record of that. And I resent that people think that the development agency can give an approval to something without you knowing it. And then they hide stuff. This is the very administration, along with the president, who doesn't want us to know about things that's going on. They hide things. So I have been asking, who got the money for the corridors in my community? Same answer I got for who got the $500, crickets. They don't know which businesses are good. There's a business that I understand got the money. They have been one of the most horrible businesses in our ward with nuisances and stuff. I don't understand why you all think that they are in a better position than the Alderman to say, this is a, a good idea. Everybody is, again, we continue to vilify the alderpeople. And this is an administration sitting on a billion dollars and trying to vilify us. We continue to allocate, we continue to vilify the Aldermen. And I agreed with that when we were putting it into the board bill, and the mayor did. And the comptroller knows the mayor did. And it was not, in fact, the president, the meeting that we had about it, he didn't even show up. And I have all the follow-up emails to show you that that is what happened. So for that to be a lie, a lie coming out from the administration, shame on them. It did not. And I would pull up in April to show you where I was saying, oh, this came from the comptroller, oh, that came from the comptroller. The things that the president wanted pretty much was voted down and did not get to go into that bill. I think that once, I heard that my predecessor, Representative Troop, who became Alderman Troop, said that we are the scariest people in the world about taking care of ourselves or doing anything, that we will vilify ourselves and try to make it like that we're doing something wrong, indicate that we're doing something wrong. So the three people that went to federal prison from our board, they couldn't have done it without LC. We all know who LC is, okay? Now, I provide, the caucus knows this. I met with, we met with Mr. Knuckles before LC was fired. Everybody at the caucus knows. What did I tell him? Fire her because she's dirty. Didn't I not tell you that? Okay? I also said, get rid of the commissioners. So a lot of the stuff that we're blaming on the Aldermen, there are checks and balances, they're under the administration, and the administration is not making it work. I know a lot about the LRA because my husband, Sterling Miller, used to be the chair of LRA. And so I know how it works. So all of that stuff you're blaming on the Aldermen, they shouldn't have been able to do that. All that had to happen was the administrative people who work over at SLDC and CDA do their jobs. When he was the chair, they would have to get a piece of paper that would tell them, this property is for sale, this is the appraisal, this is how much they're offering, who's supportive, who's not. Guess what? If it wasn't a correct amount, it didn't get done. They had questions. Funny thing happened with the former commissioner before the mayor reappointed and got rid of the one who had no business being there, who was a lawyer, who now sits on the Urban League. Every time I wrote a letter, opposition, they gave it to the person. The person then flipped that property and sold it. So if Aldermen have so much power, how is it that I didn't have the power? I didn't have the power because I wasn't in on whatever scheme was going on. So what I don't understand is why we're taking the fire. Why aren't we now saying, let's make SLDC, LRA, the commissioners, LC, who we all know who that is, every one of us who then got walked out the door right before, I'm still waiting for her indictment, okay? I'm still waiting for the commissioners indictment. Everybody accepts that it's the Aldermen. We make a recommendation. They do not have to accept the recommendation. You don't have to accept it, but you ought to have some input. So to take it entirely out does not make any sense. And then when I called them about this particular business that they gave $5,000 to and said, this is a horrible business, they don't do any background check, they just gave the money out. So we're encouraging nuisance properties in North St. Louis, and you don't want the Aldermen to say anything? The Alderwoman from the 27th can tell you. We have been dealing with a nuisance tire bill business at the corner of Harney and Union. It was in the first ward. When they did redistricting in 2011, they put it in the second, the 27th ward to get it away from, because we had made, first Representative Troop, Alderman Troop made the complaints against them. And then I had helped them, I actually brought a truck that got rid of all the tires and helped them. And then they built the tires back up. They have shooting, they do all kinds of things. That's why we wanted it in there, because we know what's going on and because we don't have any help like you guys do from the Board of Adjustment, okay? We have a racist, incompetent Board of Adjustments that doesn't put any kind of restrictions on things that happen in our ward. Then when we go back to get rid of them, they say, Alderwoman, Aldermen, there's no restrictions. Now, before Tom Villa died, he saw that himself. He and I were at a meeting together, and he was trying to get a black church to work in a white church, and they were going to share it. They put all kinds of restrictions on that. I came up with one of these stores that is a headache in North St. Louis, and they wouldn't let everything, and they didn't put any restrictions. So that's why we want to have a say, because we're not getting justice. So when you then take that out of our hands, because my letter was, my point about having a letter was that you write and say, this is why I support it, this is why I don't. Then you have some input. Now what you're doing is taking all the input, and they don't know anything about it. Then it becomes, yes, it's a political on the mayor's end, or SLDC's end, or CDA's, whatever, not CDA because CDA is not part. But so to me, that doesn't make any sense. And it really doesn't make any sense when you try to put it off on the previous president. When I was there, I can tell you when we met, how we met, go back and look at the mayor saying, and we met with Alderwoman Tyus when the former president was giving her a hard time. She said, well, we met with Alderwoman Tyus, and she did. So I always resent when people tell lies, lies. Okay, so now you guys jump on that as it's something. How does your board bill control LC or the commissioners that do all that stuff? Because all of them could have said, no. Why did LC recommend that? Why then the commissioners, how does that, how does that address that?
Alderwoman, thank you. I, to, I guess a point of clarification, the section about letters that was in the board bill specifically had an exhibit that Aldermen would need to use as a recommendation tool to SLDC to initiate that report that they provide. And it was somewhat restrictive. So the Aldermen on the committee removed that language from there. It does, so the board bill does not prohibit an alderperson from putting conditions on a property. And in fact, that was another change. Thank you for highlighting. I did not mention that in my remarks, but we did remove the Board of Adjustments from the board bill. So Alderpeople, because they don't really have a part in the quote-unquote incentive process. And Alderpeople do, as you and I well know, provide letters, you know, of support or opposition or contingent upon various conditions with respect to new businesses that are moving into wards. So the initial board bill, as it was written, would have prohibited an alderperson from doing so. And in committee, it was struck from the board bill.
Why would you prohibit an alderperson who represents the community from, for writing any kind of letter, pro or against? That doesn't even make any sense to me.
Which is why it was struck.
But I want to go on further. Let's go on to the whole thing. The former Alderman from the 21st, they're saying, oh, he closed down establishment and then strong R and it opened back up. I want, every Alderman in here who can open an establishment back up, please raise your hand, because you can't. That's another bald-faced lie. Let's use the term of the Alderman from the 12th, because this is a bald-faced lie, okay? We cannot close or open up an establishment. We have to stop putting this misinformation out into the community and then claiming it as a reason to hate on ourselves, okay? That means that somebody in the building division or the, and the legal department-
Or zoning.
Are the, and zoning, they're the ones doing that. Why are we taking the hit? Why, why aren't you writing some stuff to look at them? I actually have a resolution, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to, soon as this March 6 election is over, I'm going to come back here and have the hearing. Because what we found out, because I've been having problems with this for a long time, with the, we have a nuisance ordinance that doesn't get enforced in North St. Louis. And they turned over all, excuse me, excuse me, thank you. And they turned over all of the enforcement to the city councilor and said, you got to have so many calls, you got to have that. That doesn't true. What happened is when I then got, made them give me the last five years of things that were closed down, one property, nuisance property, in all of North St. Louis in five years, Sue Phelps closed down. But they took her black face down there to reins and closed that down so you couldn't have, that it was racist. It is racist. Because in North St. Louis, the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Public Service, they let these things go on. That's why the black Aldermen want this in here. It's not because we want to be corrupt. And it wasn't even that the Alderman from the 21st ward was corrupt. If he was corrupt, then the people who worked with him are corrupt and should be walked out of this building. Because none of us can open or close a building back. And that's only with some collusion. I keep waiting for the white people and all the Arabs, the 35 who got indicted. I want them to be across the front of the page. Because what front page of the newsletter? I'm sorry, newspaper? Because it indicates black elected officials, we just all corrupt. And we're not. And that's what it indicates. And then you, you put our board's president's name in there, but you say LC for the person who's directly responsible for what happened. You don't say her name. That kind of thing is what, when you guys get ready with these great amendments and things, that you're not having to deal with what we have to deal with. And anytime, you can only close down one establishment in five years, not in just the first ward, but all of North St. Louis. And it wasn't one of these establishments that they're shooting and killing and robbing. Or, by the way, those 35 people that indicted, they were all in North St. Louis stores. And the city couldn't do anything about it. We actually called the feds on them because the city and the police couldn't find anything. Now, I got a place in my community where they're shooting, and they've had three shootings, two people got shot. When I talked to them about nuisance, they said, well, we can't find any nuisance. You think, you think that it's a nuisance if people play loud noise? But it's not a nuisance if you have shootings right around the corner from a school? So what I'm telling you, and we have always known this in North St. Louis, they don't give a damn about us. So if we, the less control we have and we give it to somebody else, and then you're like, oh, well, you can write a letter. It doesn't make any difference about us writing a letter. Because they give it to them anyway. It makes me so mad because now Michael Garvin runs from me. Because Michael Garvin and Francis Slay pushed a service station, Salama's, which, by the way, the president had her sign up and had money up. Those are the people that tried to bribe me, tried to give me money. I emailed it over to Hal Goldsmith. I can show you where I did it, told him about what happened. They're dirty. I say it all the time. I tell them who made the offer to me. I went over to the feds and talked to Hal myself. They're dirty. Nothing happened to them. And we also have a board bill that says you can't put another service station there, flat out. You know what the Board of Adjustment did? Let them put it there anyway, under Michael Garvin's advice. He's slithering around someplace. That's what happens in North St. Louis. That's why we have all these gas stations and corner stores in our community where they shoot and shoot guns. And then the Director of Public Safety, which we have a nuisance law, says, you don't have to call the police, you don't have to call anybody. All you have to do is the Director of Public Safety has a reasonable belief that there's a nuisance there. If you have three shootings in three weeks, you think you got a reasonable belief that there's a nuisance there? Or is nuisance, are we going to define nuisances as only if people are playing loud music? I think not. So when you started talking about taking away what little, that's what you're talking about, what little protection we may have for our community, and you want me to believe in the administration or the previous administration? Now, we didn't used to have that. It used to be before the Slay administration, if the Alderman came and showed why, under Shamo-
I'm going to do a point of order.
Under Bosley.
Respectfully, Alderwoman, the, the board bill is specific, very specific to the incentive process, not the Board of Adjustments, not zoning.
But it's the same thing, is what I'm telling you.
No, this is-
It is, it is. So because if you don't tell me who's getting incentives and what's going on, and you tell me, I'll rely on this because people should be, and you say, we took the Board of Adjustment or whatever out. I'm telling you, that doesn't solve the problem. That might make you feel good and say, see, we stopped those negroes from committing a crime. But who really committed the crime were the white people in charge that nobody's getting charged with. And you're putting more power in their hand, white or black, and they haven't done their job. And I'm waiting for LC to be indicted. Why isn't she indicted? Why did you let people get indicted for, for 2017 and then not do anything and do pleas until 2022, March and April? That's what I'm telling you. This doesn't fix anything. This just exacerbated for my community. But you can go out there and say, see, we kept those criminals. Again, can you tell me, these incentives, how is it that if the people over at SLDC or CDA want to do something criminal, how does it stop them from it? Because we know, now you stopped the black Aldermen from having any power to say what happened, because we're criminals. How does that stop that?
Alderwoman, I'm, this doesn't stop an alderperson from providing a letter of support. I, I'm not necessarily following the logic there with respect to the letter of support.
What, what does it do?
So-
What does it do?
It's, let me walk through this again real quick. So- So. So Section 2, specific to transparency over at S L D C, their boards and commissions, with respect to making sure that they're, you know, streamed, that they're posted on the website, all of that. And then also that there's an annual compliance report from members of S L D C and their various boards and their employees. It also requires employees over at S L D C to disclose any potential conflicts of interest with respect to board bills or incentives that are being provided. So, you know, to your point with respect to how does it address potential corruption over there? They will be required to disclose any conflicts of interest that, you know, might come forward with respect to a particular project. We're not, the Board of Aldermen's not an enforcement agency. We have to rely upon people like our, you know, circuit attorney, the federal authorities, et cetera, to, you know, investigate and deal with, you know, those types of situations specifically. But the other section here with respect to incentive review policy and procedures. So this is specific to incentive. Sorry, Alderman.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm listening.
So this is specific to incentives. It's not specific to zoning changes, conditions, or nuisance properties. And it's specific to things like tax abatement, TIFs, and the like. It does not address, you know, zoning changes, things of that nature. It's purely related to the incentive process.
So the incentives, why don't we make them then, when they give an incentive to somebody, send it over to the members of the Board of Aldermen? Let me tell you something.
They do.
Chart, no, they don't. No, they don't. They try to hide stuff, just like the treasurer is trying to hide who got the $500 and then say, oh, it's sensitive. How can it be sensitive? I'm elected. You ain't never been elected to anything. So what I'm saying is that we already have something in our charter, whether you know it or not, they don't do it, that requires the different agencies to give a report to the mayor and to the Board of Aldermen. And I'm talking about departments yearly. Can you remember ever getting any?
It's been a while.
And what I'm saying, so you have those things? No, they don't. Or they provide it to whoever? Or they slow it down? Or they don't give it to? So this thing, what you're saying about with the aldermen, I'm just saying that it's unfair. It's unfair for the mayor to try to indicate that she wasn't part of this. You could, I wish you would have brought a comptroller because she would have told you. I will show you the emails. So she agreed to this and it did not come from the president. It came from the mayor not spending that first $5 million and still nobody knows what happened. That's where that came from. And so we wanted to have some input in it. So what you're doing may help some. There's a lot of good things in your amendment, and I agree with. But that thing of clubbing the aldermen, when we really don't have that power. And that's what I don't agree with, okay? We have to stop beating up on ourselves and let's look at it. How do we have, you don't want to talk about it, but if we pay somebody a half a million dollars over five years and she only can close down one little grandma, but not the places we're shooting? And that, and we're not the enforcement, but we can write stricter laws is what I'm saying. I don't mind, because I don't do any of that stuff, okay? I don't do it at all. I don't do tax abatements. But I just don't like it being that the aldermen are crooked and that most of us are not doing the best we can and trying to get the best thing. And I don't like paying for something that other people did. And then it indirectly or directly hurts my community in a negative way. So we, we're allowed to write a letter of recommendation. That's bull to me. You can't stop me from it. If you said I couldn't, I would still do it if I wanted to, okay? Because that is bull. That's my right to support. And in fact, there is a federal court case in which somebody tried to make me vote a certain way. And the judge, you'll see, Eric Vickers was the attorney. And the judge said, oh, no, aldermen have a right to do blah, 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 blah. We continue to try to say, no, we don't, no, we don't. All this other, the executive branch is much more professional than us. No, they aren't. Because if they were, we wouldn't have all these alder people talking about all the things that they could not get done. They're not more professional than us. They certainly don't know our communities better than we do. And they hide information. I don't see how any of you all think that's all right. So you say, we'll put it in there, but they hide information. But, so giving me permission to write a letter doesn't mean anything. I'm gonna vote against it because it's a lie that came from Room 200. And I'm gonna, when I come back, is this perfection, right?
It is perfection, but I, just a point of clarification. This does not dictate whether you can, shall, would, could, you know, write a letter.
This conversation got started.
This changes nothing from our present practice.
This conversation got started because I watched her sit there as though we weren't at the meeting, okay? And the mayor's lobbyist knows that I'm telling the truth because I was sick and throwing up right before the meeting, okay? So he knows it. I'm not trying to get him in trouble. He knows it because he was trying to say, are you all right? I was at the meeting, okay? So a lot of this misinformation, I'm not going to let it go unchallenged. And I'm not going to, I'm gonna vote against it because it started out as a lie. And in the law, we have something called the fruit of the poison tree. When you start out being a liar, everything that touches it is thrown out of court because it's the fruit of the poison tree. And so unless we can tell the truth, how did that board bill get signed? Who signed it? Or who'd let it go into law? That would have been the mayor, right? Is that right? The previous board bill with that in there?
Once it's engrossed, signed by the president of the aldermen, and sent over to the mayor's office to also sign or veto, and then it is enacted by the administration.
So she either signed it or let it go into law, right?
If she decides that that's what she wants to do.
And that board bill, the previous board bill became an ordinance, didn't it?
I'm not sure which board bill you're referring to.
The one that had about the writing the letters.
That, no, that did not pass out of committee.
No. I'm not talking about now. I'm talking about, it was in a previous board bill that we had that got passed. And then the mayor either signed it, I can't even remember now. But I'm saying, anything that's already in place, that was okay by the mayor. And for her to act like it didn't, it's wrong.
Or a previous mayor.
No, this one, this one.
Sorry, I'm not sure which board bill, previous board bill you're referencing.
I'm going to vote against it. And then I'm going to bring up all the records to show you about our meetings and our emails and everything because people shouldn't lie. Because that just makes me then tell everything, okay? Tell the truth and don't act like that there're not, there's not another side. Making the aldermen vilified and saying, oh, they can't do this, they shouldn't be able to do this. I'm gonna say to the people in North St. Louis, a black alderman that represents North St. Louis, North of Page, we can't tell you one thing that has happened in our ward in the two years. None of us, none of us, not one thing, we cannot tell you. And I'm the only black alderman that supported this current administration. Not one thing. There's a lot of, oh, we're putting the money over here, we're doing that, and then nothing gets done at all. And then you come back and you try to blame me about holding up street money and budgets, which that was a lie. And the person who didn't do it came and said, well, I didn't do it. And they were too immature to read the charter and our rules, which say the mayor can introduce her own bills. So when I showed the press that, they were all starting laughing. So I'm saying that this administration likes to blame other people and not take the stance that the buck stops here. And so I'm not going to let that go on. I'm gonna be opposed to it because it's not good to vilify us without you doing something much more formal for the people over there. Because they're really the ones, and a lot of them have been sitting on these boards and commission for two or three mayors. And if we're gonna do anything, we need to come back here and say, if the mayor does not appoint somebody, then we need to appoint them ourselves and make sure that we have a mixture of people from all parts of the city. Because we have all of this stuff going on and we don't have a fair representation. And so I'm, I don't get, what was your, what was your problem except for those three aldermen about a letter of support? Which, by the way, they never got to write a letter of support about this because they got in trouble before this thing was actually put into some kind of form. So the potential for the next group of people to do something wrong, is that it?
Alderman, I, so the letter of support section of this has been removed. So alder people are welcome to provide letters of support, provide, you know, conditional letters of support, to, you know, send in a letter of opposition. This board bill does not change that.
I thought that you said that it did put some conditions on it.
In the initial draft, it did, but we removed it in committee and it passed in committee.
Okay, so that was removed.
Correct.
But, so, but even, so if we write a letter of support, then it's okay? But if we say, this is the problem, they still can do it anyway?
You, yes. You can send in whatever letter you want now underneath the amended board bill.
And, but if we say, they've been having gunfire, blah, 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 which we do all the time at the Board of Adjustment, they still can give it anyway?
So this is only for the incentive process, not for zoning or Board of Adjustments?
I'm just talking about for the incentive.
But Alderman, I hear you with respect to nuisance activity and adjustments.
What I'm saying, if we say, don't give this to these people right here because they're already a problem in our neighborhood.
That would be, yes. So that, you could submit that letter and that letter would be included in the development report from S L D C that comes over to the Board of Aldermen as an exhibit.
But they still could be given the money anyway, is my question. The incentive.
It would have to come before the Board of Aldermen and, you know, assigned to the committee and passed out.
Okay, so I must be missing something then. So, but you won't answer. It still could be, the Board of Aldermen could say, well, that's okay. It's over in your ward and we're still supporting it anyway.
It would have to be voted on by every, you know, the appropriate number of alder people, correct? Yeah.
Right. But my answer is, then it still could be voted out and done anyway.
In theory, yes.
More than in theory. That's the way the law is written right now. There's nothing that would prevent the aldermen saying.
I mean, that's how all incentives pass, Alderman.
I know, you're trying not to say that, but I, I agree with you. That is how all of our board bills. People still can vote on them anyway, even though it's a bad actor. And that's what I'm saying. It still could be done anyway, right?
It can and has in the past, as we all know.
Okay. And this didn't come from what happened with the three aldermen? This whole thing about improving how things are done?
So I think a lot of this was obviously feedback that has been provided by constituents and other alder people over the years as well, including myself, with respect to, you know, in particular, you know, that first section that you said that you agree with in terms of creating transparency and disclosures over S L D C. And, you know, I, I'm at least seemingly thinking that you're supportive of the second section, which is the development report and having, you know, the S L D C compile that and provide it as an exhibit. I think where the conversation is at right now is with respect to the letter of support, which has been removed from the board bill is amended in general.
So I have one other question. So what if they don't give us a development report? Or they don't tell us that they have conflicts of interest? Then what happens?
Underneath the board bill, it would not be introduced by the Board of Aldermen.
And who would introduce the board bill? That's my next question.
That's not defined in the board bill.
So we would still be doing, basically what we've been doing for the last 31 years I've been here would be the alderman of the ward?
More than likely. I, I think there's, you know, a couple alder people here.
Yes, I know they didn't have. But that is not what, 99% of it has been that way.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to point out that we had a white alderman get indicted and go to prison. I never saw all of this. I keep hearing it from every place I go and it is disheartening. I've been here for 31 years on and off, okay? And it is disheartening as a black elected official, I never, when I got offered a bribe, I did the proper thing and I turned it in. So it's disheartening when I think that people are painting us with a broad stroke of this is who you are. And it's not just me and the other black aldermen. They do it for other people. And they didn't do it when the white alderman went to prison and got indicted for not the same thing, but also something that was a violation. And so as a black elected official, black female attorney, I had to be very careful of what I do. Because there are already people who put me in stereotypes, much as you know about that same thing. So I just want to make sure that people know that it's not just the aldermen that do something wrong. That it's the people over in the administration who are in charge with it. And if we're gonna, good, put us under the most strict restrictions you can, but also when you and I come back, go look over putting other people under strict restrictions so that they don't feel comfortable. L C is gone, but the next L C doesn't feel comfortable. And okaying that, because she should have said no to the aldermen, okay? Which they say to me all the time. So that's why I tell the press, that's not true. It's only a courtesy. Courtesy does not make it a law. You can't stop a courtesy. A courtesy is when I bump into you and I say, excuse me. You can't make a law that says I can't say, excuse me. So I just want this cleanup government and good government to go all, I'm a rules person. Long as it's fair and it's doing a good job, I'm okay with that. I'm okay, long as it's fair. But make sure that I have another way to make sure that I'm not having problem properties stay in my community, or I'm not having problem businesses get incentives, or people are pushing for them to have tax abatement and all of this stuff. I don't do much tax abatement. You and I are on the same page about TIF and stuff. I don't, I've probably done two or three tax abatements since I've been here. And in all of my career, probably not 10. Okay, so I'm not, because I just think that whole thing about taking the schools money is just problematic. If you ever want to have a good public school, I don't do TIF. So it would have to be something really important. So I do believe that you're headed in the right way. So I'm gonna read it again. Right now, I'm gonna be a presence since maybe I did understand something wrong. But I just don't want it to be because the aldermen are crooks, because we're not. Most of us are hardworking people who try to get things done in our community. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 17th.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Does the Alderman 25th can, will yield to questions?
The Alderman from the 25th yield to questions from the Alderman from the 17th.
I will.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman from the 25th for presenting this board bill. I'm just gonna bring some questions up regarding this. I had these questions in the HUDs Committee and I wanted just further explanation regarding a section here in the bill. It's on page seven and it's in reference to the community input. It's important for me to make sure that I'm advocating for the neighborhood and the citizens and having the citizen voice. And I brought this up in the HUDs Committee in terms of this part in the board bill. It says that the applicant shall solicit public input prior to submitting it in a manner acceptable to S L D C. I have, and the community in the 17th ward has been bypassed by S L D C in terms of getting community input. And I would like to see a committee substitute or amendment to this board bill to make sure that the community's voice is protected. The example is that in July of last year, there was a developer in terms of 4591 McCree. It was supposed to go back to the citizens in terms of having community input. And S L D C stated to me and to the public that the community input that was three or four years old was acceptable. The development had changed from an entertainment facility to a, about a $21 million entertainment facility to a currently $75 million residential project. And there was no, there has been no community input regarding that tax abatement that the developer received. And I just want to make sure and protect other neighborhoods and the new ninth ward residents in terms of being able to have community input. So the committee substitute I'd like to request would be to amend the board bill to state, the applicant shall solicit public input prior to submitting in a manner acceptable to the community and neighborhood. And S L D C shall incorporate that public input into its development proposal report. Alderman from the 25th.
Alderman, are you making a motion for an amendment? Do you, has the amendment been printed up and is it in the driver on people's desks for them to view?
Lou Galley is working on that amendment right now.
Okay. I think we have a few other people who want to testify, who have some comments on the bill. So do you want to pause for a second while we finish getting that amendment together so everybody can read it?
Okay.
And we'll come back to you as soon as that is printed.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 13th, did you have something earlier? No? Okay. Right. Alderman from the 12th?
Yes, Madam President, while we wait for the, for the printout from our legal counsel, would I be able to ask the Alderwoman of the 17th to yield to a question regarding her amendment?
Sure.
Since it's semi-before us?
Okay. Would the Alderwoman from the 17th yield to questioning from the Alderman from the 12th?
Yes.
Yes. Alderwoman of the 17th, would you mind further expanding rather loquaciously as to this amendment and how your vision for this amendment fits within the overall bill?
So regarding this amendment, it's just to make sure that the community input is solicited by the neighbors and that there is enough community input. And so, you know, this example that I'm using that happened last year, there was no community input. They wanted community input. There was substantial change to the project, as I mentioned. It was an entertainment site, about $21 million development project, and it changed to a residential complex, about $75 million project. And there was a tax abatement given, but there was no community input prior to that in terms of recent community input. The input was three to four years old and SLDC that that stated that that was acceptable as we did community input. I want to ensure that we have recent community input, current community input, and not old input because our neighborhood has changed drastically. And so how can you say that this older input is something that we should be using when there's many different neighbors, new neighbors that have, you know, different decisions that they want to be making? And so I just want to ensure that the voice of the citizens are heard and that that is not represented in this bill at this point in time. And that's where the committee substitute is being created.
Okay. And I believe this is the amendment that's getting put on our desks right now. So I appreciate you allowing me to pose that question. But I do have a more substantial follow-up. Do you envision this, if this amendment passes, do you envision it going through the, oh, I can't remember the proper title, but it is the Neighborhood Business Liaison or such? I know the name of mine, but I can't remember the title.
Alderman from the 25th, please state your point of order.
The amendment's on our desk, but it has not been moved or motioned or adopted that we put this before us.
Alderwoman from the, Alderman from the 12th, would you be willing to yield the floor over to the Alderwoman from the 17th to make the motion now that the amendment is on our desks?
Yes, and I would offer a quick point of clarification that that was just meant to sort of fill the time between the printing and the arrival. So I will yield to the Alderwoman of the 17th to put this before us.
I'd like to make a motion to present amendment number one, committee substitute to the board bill 64 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 17th, seconded by the Alderman from the 12th, that we place amendment one to board bill number, committee, or board bill number 64, committee substitute as amended, front of us. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. So I'm presenting this amendment to make sure that the neighborhood and community voice is protected in development projects that are $10 million or more. I think that we need to make sure that there's a minimum of two meetings, but more importantly, it is to make sure that the community voice is heard and it's not superseded by SLDC or some other party and that they are not heard. And that is why I'm presenting this amendment as set forth.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 13th?
Thank you so much. For the Alderwoman from the 17th, yield to questions?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate this amendment. I'm trying to understand, so where it says, "Shall solicit public input prior to submitting in a manner acceptable to," you're saying it would now say, "Community and neighborhood?"
Correct.
And SLDC. I think that makes sense, but I also wonder, how would that be determined?
So I would foresee it be determined. I know that in the 17th Ward, we have a, and in particular Forest Park Southeast, we have a Forest Park Southeast Development Review Committee, and we have created a process in terms of how community engagement will be in that neighborhood. And I have also worked with the larger 17th Ward in Central West End in terms of the community engagement process. And so we have outlined how that would work. And so for, you know, each ward and the neighborhoods in the ward, the Alder person would be working with the neighborhood to create that process that would be acceptable to the neighborhood. I think there can be some minimums that we could have some standardization because these $10 million projects or more, they should at least have two community meetings. But we have seen in the past in the 17th Ward that there have not been sufficient amount of community meetings. There might be just one. But a project like 17 or $10 million or more is a huge project and that we should make sure that multiple parties are able to be engaged and have their voices heard. So it's, because right now, there's no process at this time in this bill or what I've seen in terms of SLDC and how we have done community engagement. As I've mentioned, in the summer of 2022, this Forest Park Southeast was overrun or overruled by SLDC that there was proper community engagement. And that community engagement happened three or four years ago. That's not when a, when a development project changed. So I just want to make sure and ensure that the constituents and residents' voices are heard in projects that are going to be affecting their neighborhood drastically.
I appreciate that. And I think community input is key and crucial in developments like this. I guess I just wonder how that would be standardized across development projects. You know, the neighborhoods I represent don't have anything like that in place, but I do think that they would very much appreciate having the input if there was ever a project of this size that was in front of me to consider. So I appreciate that. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 25th?
Will the Alderwoman from the 17th yield?
The Alderwoman from the 17th yield to questioning from the Alderman from the 25th?
Yes.
Alderwoman from the 25th, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderwoman, can you help define community and neighborhood? Those aren't definitions that are currently in the board bill.
If you, in order to define community and neighborhood, we could zero that down in terms of, you know, how can we get this to be a process in different wards? I believe that the Alder person in that ward should get, bring together their community, their neighborhood, and if their neighborhood or community does not have that process developed, to develop that with SLDC and have some standardized practice. And so if need be, in this particular amendment, we could add something to make this more specific and clarified so we can move forward in terms of, you know, putting this into the board bill.
So that's not currently in the amendment, though, correct?
I see that as a question that you have, and I suggest that modifying this amendment to be more specific so that this process can be played out as this board bill goes forward.
Okay, so we can't amend an amendment. We have to vote up or down on an amendment and then you, as the sponsor, can withdraw your motion and work on amendment to this amendment to add those. But I can't, I'm not going to be voting for this because it doesn't provide any clarification or structure around what any of that means. So, you know, I'll be voting against the amendment. If you have something that's more substantive that addresses, you know, more specificity, I'd be, you know, willing to entertain that. But as the amendment's currently written, I would be voting against it. Thank you.
So I would like to withdraw this amendment and come back with a more clarified amendment to propose at this meeting.
Okay. The amendment, I need the Alderman from the second, or the 12th to withdraw his second. Okay. Amendment is withdrawn. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 17th?
So I would like to, you know, propose a modified amendment. Am I able to do that? Do we do a recess or how would that work in terms of being able to make it a bit more clear for everyone?
How long do you think that you need to get a amendment together?
I'll say about 20 minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't...
I'll just talk for 20 minutes.
I'll have to ask Lou on how fast I can be.
All right. We'll continue to take testimony on the bill and see where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first?
Madam President, members of the board, I always like to give people a chance to have their turn, even if you don't win. That's, if the Alderman from the 25th would yield, because now I have my questions before me. I marked up, I left my marked copy of this board bill at home.
Alderman from the 25th, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the first?
Okay.
I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
If you don't, I'll just talk for 20 minutes. I'll start reciting the Constitution.
I certainly know you're capable, Alderwoman.
Okay. So if we go to page six of 15, I'm going to put you three in a corner. If you go to page six of 15, line 11, it says, "All incentive applications filed with the St. Louis Development Corporation, excepting those attached to confidential business, retention, attractive projects, shall be open to the public under Missouri sunshine law." Can you explain what that means to me?
Alderwoman, can you repeat which section that is?
That is page six...
I was pulling up the board bill while you were reading that.
Page six of 15, line 11, which is subsection C.
So underneath Missouri sunshine law, certain negotiations are exempted from sunshine. That section essentially reiterates the Missouri sunshine requirements.
So let's just say when we were negotiating about the Rams, when we were trying to, well, it really didn't start out the Rams. It started out the Carolina, and then we went to the Rams. But if we're negotiating to try to bring a business or we're trying to keep a business, we can keep it so that it's not open to sunshine because we don't want that to blow up.
It's considered a negotiation with respect to Missouri sunshine law and therefore...
All right. And then I want to go to page 13 of 15, line five, really starting with line three. Letters of support may recommend approval of a development proposal or real estate transaction by LRA, but may not recommend specific terms and conditions of any tax incentive cited specific development approval or real estate transactions by LRA. I don't understand why that's in there. First of all, LRA doesn't have to, let me just try to say again, they absolutely do not have to do anything that the members of the Board of Aldermen say to do. It is a state agency. It is, although they work with our stuff, commissioners are appointed by the mayor, the comptroller, and it used to be taxing entities, but I think they just changed it to the St. Louis Public Schools. Isn't that correct?
Run that by me again, Alderwoman.
LRA commissioners are appointed by the mayor, the comptroller, and now it says just the St. Louis Public Schools. It used to say the taxing entity, so it had the St. Louis Public Schools, MSD, and the Junior College.
Correct.
The commissioners are under no...
The TIF commission.
I beg your pardon?
The TIF commission is represented.
No, no, no. The LRA commissioners.
Okay.
The LRA commissioners. I don't know if you knew that.
I don't believe they have those same requirements now.
Yes, they do. I just looked them up.
Yes.
Yes. They don't have to do what we say. They are only, they only report to their appointing authority. And their appointing authority can remove them anytime they want to. And how I know it, and then I went to check, is because one of the commissioners, when I was an Alder person, did something I didn't like. And I went to the mayor's father and he removed her immediately and put somebody else. But they, I couldn't do anything to him, is what I'm saying. You can go look it up again. They don't have to do what the members of the Board of Aldermen say.
No, absolutely not.
We can't tell them what to do. We can recommend what they do. But there is no, we have no, anything to stop them from doing it, okay? Because if they did, there was a lot of stuff that got flipped in my ward that went to somebody and then got flipped to somebody else that wouldn't have happened. So I'm just pointing out to you, we don't have any power over LRA, only in that we have two of the three members of our E&amp;A that appoint the commissioners. But they absolutely serve at their pleasure. And if anytime they want to remove them, they can. And I'll point that out to say that I'm, that under this, I am not able to, let's see, provide a letter of support that requires that a certain thing be done. The only time I ever provide letters of support is somebody comes and say, "I want to build a shopping center." And then I'll write a letter of support and then after they get my letter of support, they say, "Oh, I'm really putting a gas station." By your insertion here, then they could just go and do something different. And the whole reason that you're soliciting my support is because you want me to try to come and say, "This is going to be a good project." But now what you're saying under yours is says, "But may not recommend specific terms and conditions of any tax incentive," I don't care about that, "site specific development approval." That's exactly what you need when you're writing letters saying that I'm supporting this because they're going to build a shopping center or a hardware store or pharmacy or whatever. I'm not doing this for another gas station. And then they get it and then they do something different for that. Why is that in there? I don't understand that. And by the way, I want to point out, these are recommendations. They are not mandates. We cannot mandate anything to LRA. That's why I said that I felt like this was pointed towards something that is the wrong thing. We cannot mandate anything. We could, all of us say, "No, we're not going to do tax payment or whatever," but our recommendations are just that. They're recommendations. It's like when they want to get rid of automatic courtesy. You can't stop me from being courtesy. So why would I want to again...
Actually, Alderwoman, pardon me, a point of order...
No, no, no. I want to go on. I have the floor. No, I have the floor and I'll finish. I want to know why we would fight...
But I'm going to make a point of order, Alderwoman.
No, I have the floor. Why would we...
I can make a point of order when anyone has the floor.
No, I have the, okay, but you can make the point of order.
Madam President, my point of order being, the committee substitute that's currently before us is not the committee substitute that passed out of the HUDs Committee. The references that the Alderwoman from the first is making are part of Section 4, which was removed from committee. So the clerk actually needs to update the committee substitute that's currently before us. So that, I hope you can, that's a respectful point of order.
Yes, it is. It's a correct one, too.
So, but that, they removed, they simply removed Section 4, but they kept the contents of Section 4. So the clerk actually needs to update this. And Alderwoman, I am going to now not yield for questioning so I can work with the clerk to get that updated.
Okay, so are we going to remove this from the floor and move on? Or what are we going to do?
Nope. Okay, there we go. We will, I think we have another comment on the board bill, so why don't we give the clerk opportunity to get the correct version into the drive and on folks' desks? And I'll take the comments from the Alderman from the 7th in the meantime.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it.
Alderman from the 7th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I was going to call the question, but if we don't even have the right bill on our desks, that's probably not appropriate. So I will sit down.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We're going to take a quick five-minute recess so we... We're going to take a quick five-minute recess, so we can give an opportunity for the correct version of the board bill to make it onto everybody's desks. So, only five minutes. It is my understanding that the version that has been placed on everybody's desk still is not correct, so we are going to go back to recess again for another five minutes or so, 10 minutes, to get the right version. You do have the correct version?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there's a Scrivener's error that can be...
Fixed.
Okay. Never mind on that, it's a Scrivener's error. We will fix that on the floor, so we can keep moving forward.
Is lunch also here? Is lunch also here?
No, it's on the way.
Okay. And lunch is on the way, so it will be here soon as well.
We go back in session?
Alderwoman from the first, yeah, we are back in session, just so you know. All right. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Madam President. I, we have the correct committee substitute as it was passed out, or I'm sorry, Board Bill 64 committee substitute as amended, as it was passed out of committee. It is now placed on everyone's desk, so that they have the appropriate copy. My apologies, but there's a clerical error somewhere in here with the initial bill that was placed on everyone's desk, where it had sections of Section 4, which we did remove in committee. Those have since been removed, and they're updated and placed on everyone's desk at this point. Is there, I'm willing to entertain further discussion on the bill, if there is any. Otherwise, I'm happy to renew my motion.
Okay. Alderwoman from the first.
So, I'm trying to, so since we just got this, you said you took all of that out. I haven't had time to read a proper bill before us, that's why I was hoping that we had time to do this. So, so the Scrivener, first, we have an error, Section 5 should be Section 4, I'm sorry. Madam President, members of the board, may I inquire of the alderman from the 25th?
Alderman from the 25th, are you willing to entertain a question from the Alderwoman from the first? Alderwoman from the first, you may proceed.
Somebody's phone is really going off there. So, I'm looking at a section on page 13 of 13. It says Section 5 and Section 6, but there's no Section 4.
That's the Scrivener's error that would be corrected.
So, that should be 4 and 5, right?
Correct. So, that's a friendly amendment that, you know...
It doesn't even have to be a amendment, that's just a...
It's just a Scrivener's error that'll be adjusted by the staff.
Okay. And then, so what I had been talking, speaking to you about, or questioning you about, I didn't have time to mark it up again. So, you're saying that on page 13 of 15 was where it was. Okay. So, you're saying all of that was taken.
I, Alderwoman, I think you can understand my confusion as to why you were addressing those things, because they were not supposed to be in the bill, so...
But you can also understand...
That was the reason that those were removed in committee. So, again, thank you for highlighting that that did not end up on our desk the way that it passed out of committee, so, but any references to the letter of support or restrictions thereof have been removed.
And I hope you can understand why I was referencing them, because I was like, "I know I read that." Then I came here, and it was the same thing, and I'm like, "Oh..."
It was the same thing, different section. They removed Section 4, but failed to remove the items underneath Section 4 and just included them in Section 3 for whatever reason, so...
And so...
We should all be on the same page now.
So, now, it's only 13 pages instead of 15, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I want to make sure. And then... I'm sorry, just didn't have time to read this, and I don't want to close before I make sure it was something else I had to ask.
It's literally the exact same, except it had the sections, I believe it was, I threw, like, four sections after that that were removed, that all were pertaining to the letter of support.
Okay.
Nothing was added, it was just the sections that were supposed to be struck per the amendment in committee were removed.
Okay. But I'm sorry, I had another question, and it's marked on this, oh, the copy that's not good, and maybe it's no longer relevant, but I didn't have time to mark this. So, do we keep Section, I guess it's 3, subsection F?
That is related to the conflict of interest disclosures?
Yes, we kept that.
That is still in there, correct?
Okay. And... So, it can be signed manually or electronically? Okay.
And that conflict of interest disclosure will be included in the development report that's provided by SLDC.
But then it goes on to say, "Furthermore, the alderperson shall sponsor a bill or resolution, if such alderperson will be prohibited from offering a letter of support." Did we correct that?
Yes.
Okay.
The last, the last section of the previous Section 3 was also removed. I think that's what you're referencing. There's the last sentence of the previous Section 3.
By George, I think you have a bill I can support.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Okay. And so, neither one of us are crazy, just have the board bill.
Simple clerical issue.
Need further discussion. Alderman from the 7th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. I would move to call the question on the previous motion from the Alderman from the 25th to perfect the bill.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 7th, was that seconded by the Alderman from the 16th, that we call the question on Board Bill Number 64, committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Grass. 15 aye votes. 4 no votes. And 6 voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to end debate on Board Bill Number 64, committee substitute as amended. We will now take up the perfection of Board Bill Number 64, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not one to generally cut off debate. Can appreciate where everyone might be coming from, but that's unfortunate. With that, you know, I would renew my motion that we find, or that we perfect Board Bill 64, committee substitute as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderperson from the 8th, is that correct?
Correct.
The 9th.
The 9th. We perfect Board Bill Number 64, committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Grass. 24 aye votes and 2 voted no.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 25th to perfect Board Bill Number 64, committee substitute as amended.
Board Bill 120 as amended, introduced by Alderman Bosley and Alderwoman Peel, and ordered as recommended by the Board of Estuemen and Apportionment, appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to extend the funds to the extent received, containing the severability and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number 120 as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to perfect Board Bill 120 as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 120 as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
All right, thank you. Board Bill 120, if you haven't had the chance to look at it, is a pretty large portion of spending from the ARPA fund, $74 million. It is to go to numerous infrastructure projects. Folks have had the chance to look at it. We are looking at building a public safety entering point, doing some street paving, sending some money to the digital equity fund, we're doing some workplace modernization enhancements. We got mobility and transportation master plan, planning residential streets, refu pilot project, sidewalk improvements, putting some funding in two parks, and just doing some street paving. We talked about it in committee, had a very long conversation, so if anybody has any questions...
Need further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
I don't have Board Bill 120, and several of us don't have it, so if somebody could get us the board bills, we would appreciate it.
I would say...
I think Lamont is distributing them right now. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Madam President. In committee, I certainly had some issues with this bill. I think it's primarily an infrastructure bill. There were, you know, many proposed amendments tacked on. I had stated in committee that I would be bringing an amendment after further discussions with the administration and some assurances that as we move forward, that traffic calming along the McCoslin Corridor, particularly right at Highway 40 and south of 40 to Manchester, are going to be included, that the administration's going to be taking a hard look at that, seeing what dollars we can get in to either institute traffic calming or look at other measures to make that a more safe stretch to travel. It's one of the most widely-used north-south routes in the region here, and I don't want to hold up a whole lot of good projects for one thing that I'm bent out of shape for, so I will be supporting this now that I do have those assurances. Thank you.
Need further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President and members of the board, if the Alderman from the 3rd would yield, please.
The Alderman from the 3rd, yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the first?
I will.
You may proceed.
Okay, Alderman, I wasn't at the meeting, this is a lot of infrastructure, but I do know why it had to go to, it was in HUDs, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And during this conversation in which this stuff is allocated, these funds are allocated, was there any timeline about when these things would be done?
No, ma'am.
So, we're just going to allocate it, because you do know, you remember when I, last April, we moved $7.6 million for traffic calming and paving in North St. Louis? And then, I don't know if you, you're on the Street Committee, so I don't know if you were there at that meeting, but Richard Bradley came and told us, not only was our money held up, but the money for South St. Louis streets paving was also held up, and nothing got done this summer. And the whole point was that we were waiting for the mayor's citywide traffic calming, but during that whole time, Alderman were calling and saying, "Why isn't my street getting paved? Why isn't my project being done?" So, I told you already I was going to support this, but I just want to point out that we keep allocating money, and they keep pointing fingers at us, and once it's allocated, it goes into execution hell, okay? It's not getting done. So, and I also wanted to know, is this street calming going to be patterned that she's talking about? Is that going to affect people who already have street calming projects? Because I know the Alderwoman from the 27th has a, what is the term, shovel ready? And she's been waiting for a year, and that funds that I, that $7.6 million was supposed to cover it, but it hasn't. So, do you know if it's going to affect anything that's already in place or not?
Yes, ma'am. So, it does intend to affect that any... Yes, ma'am. So it does intend to affect that any project, not projects, but any completed traffic studies right now that have been done. And there are, let's see if I can pull it up here in a second, there are corridors in which they do have identified in terms of what traffic studies are done. I believe it's about 10 of them. So they're looking at funding those. So projects that are already done will be funded, but you know, I won't say particularly that it will be, you know, the project, the alderwoman Boyd's... I'm sorry. So, no, but there are designated dollars going to designated completed traffic studies. And just, you know, keeping it all the way a thousand, everybody doesn't have traffic studies that are completed. There are traffic studies that need to be done within corridors as well, so, you know, without a doubt, this isn't something that is going to solve all of our issues or problems. It's not going to address all of the traffic common, well, all of our concerns across all of our corridors. You know, even the ones that are the most heavily used, there is much more funding that needs to be leveraged for us to get enough dollars to be able to adequately deal with this systematically. So, you know, I don't believe that these dollars will be used to just tap a Band-Aid on it. The mayor's office, Chief of Staff, did speak about the possibility of being able to leverage these dollars for federal funding so we can have more money to be able to add with it. There also is funding in here for a traffic safety plan that will hopefully give us some sort of idea over the next two or three years. When that's done, what we could be looking at is potential, like a roadmap, and seeing what we need to have taken care of within the city. So a year from now, we'll be able to look and say, "Hey, that didn't happen," or "This didn't happen." You know, we'll have some guidelines, so. That is, that is, I do think one of the good things we'll be able to see out of this without a doubt is we'll have a clear, concise idea in some time from now, after that plan is completed, where do we go from here?
And so did we also have any kind of discussion about hiring more people for BPS? Because if we don't have anybody that can do the work, it's just going to get bogged down. We need several more people for BPS, several more people for streets. So if we don't get these things, we have all these pie in the sky ideas that don't get done. Like for me, my traffic, well, what I'm doing, there is already a plan for King's Highway. It kind of starts at I-40 and comes through the 28th Ward and what is currently the 18th and the 26th Ward, and then it picks up right at King's Highway. So I was going to pick up what they had already done and just kind of follow what they were doing. That's what part of that $7.6 million was for, is curbs for King's Highway. And then in our residential part of it, go into two lanes instead of three, and making sure the curbs are high enough so that people are not, every week, they're knocking over people's fences, running into trees, running people's houses, running into the monuments and things up and down the King's Highway Memorial Boulevard, because it is not North King's Highway. Anything that's from Martin Luther King to West Florissant that has a median is King's Highway Memorial Boulevard, not North King's Highway. And so I just don't want to have to start all over again and start to deal with that. And also, I do think that we have to, when we're passing these things, we're going to have to address staff.
I agree.
BPS may not tell you that, because he gets appointed by the mayor. You can't do it with the... We got him, we got Ms. Doss, and then the two people, one assigned to south, one assigned to now north. We can't get things done if we don't have enough people to do the work, so.
I agree a thousand percent.
So, I told you I was going to support it, but I'm supporting it hesitantly because I'll be back here next year saying, "We don't have enough people," okay, and that should be part of, if the... I want the mayor's office to hear, they need to hire some people to service all of this. You cannot work two or three people to death. You got to have somebody that can do that. Pay them the money and get started, because I'm hearing my constituency, they're complaining, people are getting killed. Got killed at my corner, Maffet Place and King's Highway with no curbs. Had six or seven people get killed on King's Highway. I'm hearing about all the potholes, and I'm not just hearing it from in my community, I'm hearing it from across the city because they say, "Well, you're the Chair of Streets, why aren't you doing anything?" And this is what I'm doing right now, is to say, "We have to get some of that paving." We were able to get paving done around the stadium, the soccer stadium.
Quickly.
Okay, so again, the people who live in other communities don't think that soccer stadium is more important than the rest of the community. So we had aldermen that came to the street department to complain about how many times they had asked for their streets to be paved, and they would tell them in 30 days, and then they didn't. And then Mr. Bradley sat there and told us, he just held the money up, and he didn't tell any of us. That's the administration. And he said, "Oh, the mayor didn't tell him to do that." I've known him way longer than the mayor does. I know Mr. Bradley would not be doing that if somebody was telling, not telling him to do that, that it's not okay. We need to spend that money. We should have a plan. I support that, a big, a comprehensive plan, and then we need to execute. If we keep planning and never execute, there's a problem with that. So we need more staff to process these funds, and we need to get going. I don't want to see, it's a march now. I want to see curbs being poured and streets being paved in the neighborhoods, north and south. Everything cannot be about the central quarter and downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I will say this for other alderpeople in the room. It might be right now wise, while all these dollars are here, to start encouraging your residents to call in about what streets they would like to have paved, what sidewalks they'd like to have done as well, any infrastructure needs you do have in your ward, because when these dollars do start being dished out, at least our voices will be heard.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
More just of a comment. You know, I wanted to use some of these funds for the streetlight project, which is a very safe, safety project. And I was told, no, all the ARPA funds are used. And I'm going to vote for this because there's a bunch of stuff in here, but we're also giving money into parks where there's a lot of money already out there for parks. I just want to share my disappointment that we're now not going to be funding a very safety issue with this money, but we're going to fund some parks. That's the only kind of money I have. I'll vote for this because there's other good stuff, and that's what we tend to do here. Throw good stuff, and we'll throw in a few, I guess what they call in the Senate, pork belly stuff, you know, to get stuff through. Anyway, I'm just disappointed, and I just want to throw that in there.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman for the 14th.
Yes, Madam Chair. Would the alderman from the 3rd yield for a question, please?
I will.
Alderman from the 3rd, will you yield to the alderwoman from the 14th?
I will.
You may proceed.
Okay, I see here we have a very unspecific design and implement traffic calming and roadway improvements based on completed traffic studies. I'm glad to hear that we're using the studies that have all been, already been done. I mean, we've done study after study after study and not followed any of them. But I guess my question is, I thought we had already allocated money for like King's Highway from Graboy to 70, is it, or West Florissant, okay. Grand from the south side to the north side. Is this redundant? I'm not quite sure if we're putting out more money for money we've already allocated. And I don't have a drill down on this of what exactly this is going to be used for. And I don't know if you can answer that or not, Alderman Bosley, but I, you know, it's just a point of interest that I would like to be able to carry back to my constituency to say, "Yes, we're moving forward." Because the alderwoman from the 13th, myself, and the alderman from the 12th had allocated our ward capital funds to do the south side end of King's Highway probably right after they were elected, so that's been almost two years ago, and guess what?
Nothing.
Nada. Nothing's happening. So I don't know if you have that information, or maybe that could be provided by the administration, because I don't mind funding this because I think it's needed, but I don't want to fund it twice and then find out we come up short or we don't have enough. I don't, I don't get it.
Yes, ma'am. Hopefully I can...
Board Bill 184. Yeah.
Hopefully I can bring a little bit of clarification. For the 14, 5 million that are supposed to be going for the traffic calming improvements, you know, with the five corridors. We got Union, we're going in right to Florissant, from Grand Avenue, Holly Hills to Hall Street, King's Highway from Graboy to Florissant. Is that what we were speaking about?
Yeah, and it does note in here it was already funded in 184, so we're adding more money to that, so we ought to have a Cadillac plan?
Well, so these were my thoughts, and that's why I also just stated what I stated here. So it's important for us to really, really make sure that, you know, we are encouraging our residents right now to get out there and put on the books what needs to be done. Right up here on this board bill, the 12, the 12 million for design, that I think we were talking about implementing traffic calming and roadway improvements based on traffic studies. After these traffic studies, right down here at the 14, 5, that's like literally almost left up for grabs. That is one of the things that we did speak about. They, you know, I'm not going to completely say that that's what the mayor's office said, but realistically, this is the conversations that we're having now. I said the same thing, that, hey, are we going to be pulling money from the 14, 5, also helping out this, the corridors that we already have identified from, you know, these traffic studies, and they said possibly. So with that being said, I know that we also have the ability as aldermen right now and residents to say, "Hey, we would like this street to be paved. These, you know, these improvements make sense. We want bump outs here." So whatever it is that we like for the remaining of this 12, 5 to be utilized, I'm sorry, the 14, 5 to be used for, we need to start making sure that those things are already proposed. Therefore, after the spending is done with these 10 corridors, we don't go back doubling looking for more money, you know, for those same corridors.
Okay. I get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized to close.
Thank you. Once again, I appreciate you all, and I ask for your favorable consideration, and with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 120 As Amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page. Alderwoman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Lappy.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Narion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye!
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Grass. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderman of the 3rd on the perfection of Board Bill 120 As Amended.
Board Bill 180.
Madam Clerk, could, we've also had a request to please move Board Bill 160 to the third, regular third reading calendar.
Sorry, you said 160?
Yes.
Board Bill 187, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on a 3,800 block of Virginia Avenue, 2,600 block of Winnebago Street, 3,100 block of Osceola Street, 3,500 block of Iowa, 3,600 block of Iowa, 2,800 block of Miami, 3,900 block of South Compton, 2,600 block of Osage, 3,700 block of California, 3,500 block of Michigan, 3,500 block of Nebraska, and the 4,000 block of California between the intersections of California Avenue, Osage Avenue, California Avenue, and Gaskinay Street, and the 3,900 block of South Compton Avenue between the intersections of South Compton Avenue and Osage Street and South Compton Avenue and Kidcock Street.
Alderwoman from the 20th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 187.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Aldermen. I'd like to move for the perfection of Board Bill 187.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 20th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 6th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 187. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take a moment here. You know, we are perfecting a board bill related to speed humps in the 20th Ward. I want to thank my colleagues for hearing this in committee this week, particularly the Chair of Streets. I want to point out that the reason why we're even hearing bills down here on speed humps is because, you know, for many years, we have had a lot of issues with regards to the Streets Department answering to basic infrastructure needs of our wards. The alderwoman from the 1st introduced a bill that requires these bills to go through the Board of Aldermen because frankly, the Streets Committee had not, or the Streets Department had not been answering to calls for the Board of Aldermen. As we come to the end of session, many of us are staring down some ward capital that we're having a difficult time encumbering. We're having a difficult time allocating and making sure that at the end of our terms that we are investing in the infrastructure that our residents have been requesting, that we have been promising for many, many years. This is incredibly frustrating. It's a, it's a lot of, it's a lot to deal with, and there's a lot of frustration here and with regards to making those last-minute infrastructure investments. That is not new. It has been happening for a long time. We have really failed to have good interaction with some of the, some of the department heads that really are required for these investments to be made. And so I can really appreciate the need here to try to fix the system legislatively, and I just want to point out how very, very frustrating it is for all of us when, you know, when we're trying to make investments in our communities, and it's a very, very difficult task. I'm grateful that we were able to get this through for the residents of the 20th Ward, and with that, I ask for favorable perfection of Board Bill 187.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the 20th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 6th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 187. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Previous, did I hear a request for previous roll? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Board Bill 162, introduced by Alderman Stevens, Alderwoman Rice, and Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance repealing Chapter 3.06.010 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis 2020 pertaining to the election of members of the Board of Aldermen and their terms of office, which is a restated and subordinate to the provisions of Article 2, Section 3 of the City Charter.
Alderman from the 12th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number... Sorry, I don't have this one in front.
162?
162.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, to move that we perfect Board Bill 162.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 12th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 8th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 162. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Dear colleagues here at the Board, Board Bill 162 merely adjusts some outdated, defunct language in the city code that is now subordinate to the city charter, with the city charter, of course, taking supremacy. To give some historical background to this, because you know that I'm an American Studies student, and I love the city of St. Louis. June 30th, 1914, the citizens of the city of St. Louis then adopted the city charter, which is now the city charter that we use today, the charter of 1914, and Chapter 3.6.10, specifically Chapter 3.06.010, is established a year later for the 1915 election cycle. So back then, they create this chapter, Chapter 3, it's under administration, Title III administration, in order to be in compliance with the city charter as approved by citizens back in 1914. On November 6th, 2012, board reduction is approved by city voters, adopted by city voters. So ultimately, in the grand scheme of things, Board Bill 162 merely completes the formula by removing outdated language that cannot be enforced because it's subordinate to the city charter, that references 28 wards, and that ultimately, so sorry, only serves to potentially be confusing for those outside of the Board of Aldermen or outside the legal profession in the future. So with that, Madam President, I'm happy to... So, with that, Madam President, I'm happy to yield for any questions, specifically questions from the alderwoman of the first.
Alderwoman from the first.
Um, Madam President, members of the Board, I ask for it to be taken off so they could be explained, so some people who are out there in TV land didn't understand, he did such a good job, I don't have any questions to ask him. Thank you.
Right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the twelfth, seconded by the alderwoman from the eighth, that we perfect Board Bill number one-eighty-seven. All those in favor signify by, one-sixty-two, Board Bill one-sixty-two, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of Board Bills for Perfection.
Third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill one-thirty-eight, one-fifty-five, one-thirty-one, one-sixty-one, one-fifty-nine, one-seventy-six, one-forty-four, one-sixty-four, committee sub, one-sixty-eight, and Board Bill one-seventy-five, floor sub.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Excuse me. Point of order.
Alderwoman from the first.
I had already, I had spoken before and said there was several, uh, third reading consent calendar places. Board Bills that I wanted off, one-fifty-nine, one-sixty-eight, and...
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Those are two, and I'm not necessarily opposed to them, I have a question to ask. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt our third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the alderman from the ninth, that we adopt the third reading consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Grass? Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderman from the twenty-fifth to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossment and final passage.
Board Bill ninety-three, introduced by Alderman Page, and ordinance approving redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two for the Cast Avenue, North Fourteenth, O'Fallon, and Hogan Street area.
Alderman from the fifth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number ninety-three.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Uh, I move that we third read and finally pass, uh, Board Bill number ninety-three.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fifth, seconded by the alderwoman from the fourth, that we third read and finally pass, Board Bill number ninety-three. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, you heard most of my soliloquy on Board Bill ninety-three, uh, during the perfection phase. I will simply repeat that this board bill provides essential workforce housing to replace the old O'Fallon Place, a community that's well over forty years old, with new state-of-the-art housing in the form of Preservation Square.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the fifth, seconded by the alderman, or alderwoman from the fourth, that we third read and finally pass, Board Bill number ninety-three. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Negracia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Odenberg? Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
President Green?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Grass? Twenty-three aye votes and two no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the fifth to third read and finally pass, Board Bill number ninety-three.
Board Bill one-eighty-two, committee sub as amended, sponsored by Alderman Orion, and ordinance adopting the Uniform Plumbing Code, two thousand and fifteen edition in full, except it conflicts with the changes thereto contained herein, as the plumbing code of the City of St. Louis repealing ordinance number six-nine-two-five-five, and contain the penalty clause, separability clause, savings clause, emergency clause, and accountification clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number one-eighty-two, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we third read and finally pass, Board Bill number one-eighty-two, committee sub as amended.
It's been moved by the alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by the alderwoman from the sixth, that we third read and finally pass, Board Bill number one-eighty-two, committee substitute as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Uh, this is the plumbing code, we've talked about it at length, it's been a long day, I'd ask for your favorable consideration.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the Board, I again rise in opposition of this board bill. Um, many of the things I've already said from, uh, what was that, Friday? What is this, Tuesday? I don't even know, we had so many meetings lately. Um, so my good friend, who is the one black person that's assigned to be down at this Board of Aldermen, I didn't hear from him. I used to hear from him, but I didn't hear from him, and the reason I didn't hear from him, because he knows what I'm saying is true. Um, there were a number of people in the community that actually watched these board bills, and actually called me to find out how to go onto the webpage, and was appalled at what they saw. And they were appalled because, um, all the white men that run everything, and the only black person who's supposed to run anything is really not even a business rep, and just is assigned to come down here and lobby black Aldermen, um, to make it seem like that we are being, um, significantly included in plumbers, pipe fitters, and every, and any other kind of jobs that we're not being able to be included in, not in any significant manner. You can go back and look at some of the past class, and you see where, um, they have people who start out in a class that are black, and by the time you finish with what is going on, and by the time they're supposed to graduate, they don't get to get to be the next step. And then, and just in case you don't understand it, we also have a, uh, a, uh, commission of board here of, uh, pipe fitters and plumbers that get to decide who gets to go on to a different, uh, step in becoming a pipe fitter. Um, and they're mostly white men, too. And so, that is not ever going to be okay. It is a wrong way to do business. It is a racist way to do business. We've already had that talk about, well, um, the legislation doesn't say anything about jobs, everything is about jobs. That's why they want a certain code about jobs that they get to have, that we don't get to have. Inclusion in decision-making that we don't get to have. As long as it doesn't say, it's racist, it's racist, black people keep out, people want to pretend like it doesn't make it racist. There is something called overt racism, and there is something called covert racism. I like covert racism much better, 'cause it's George Wallace at the door saying, "You will not come into these schools, you will not come in." It's when I came to St. Louis and watched all the white people who didn't want to do this in, um, in the public schools, and they said all kind of things, they said it in Kansas City when I was there. I was calling my mother going, "You ought to hear the stuff they're saying." That, white people feel uncomfortable enough that they'll say, "Oh, that's racist, so we don't want anything to do with that." But when you are able to use legislation, that's covert racism, and it's used all the time against black people, and women, and people of color, and others. And it's used, and then good white people can say, "It don't have anything to do with that." But when you start looking at the outcome, then you know it does have something to do with that. And for you to feel comfortable in saying it doesn't have anything to do with it, then anybody who tells me it's okay for thirty years, over thirty years, for the, uh, union not to include black people in significant numbers at the top, that's a problem. I always, when the unions come to talk to me, and I grew up in a union household, my mother was in the union, my stepfather, my father, most of my aunts and uncles, my mother's one of ten children, and all but one, he was a company man, he almost didn't get to sit at the table, but, um, they're union people, they believe in the union, and the unions, I've been able to get a good education, get my teeth fixed, a lot of things, you know, doc, have medical, but they don't change really easily. You have to shake them and prod them. Um, they've had their jobs and their titles handed down from their father to the grandfather, from the grandfather to the father to the son, to the uncles, and, and so they have a family thing. I just watched, re-watched a few weeks ago about the, uh, nine-one-one, and they were talking about all the firefighters who got killed, and they were predominantly white. That is because predominantly in New York, the firefighters in those segments were white people, who they, uh, then, um, got jobs for their sons and their nephews and things, and that's what we do in this City of St. Louis. And we nod and wink and say, "It's not racism, it is racism." And until we call them out in bank and not pass special legislation, 'cause they want it, and don't make them have anything that they have to do, we can just say it don't have anything to do, it does. I asked the alderman from the twenty-fourth if he had gotten money from the union, he did. So did the, the president. And he got money from the union in, what is it, June or July? If we want to do some good legislation about not having conflicts, then you should not be able to sponsor legislation if you've gotten money from somebody within a year that affects them. That should be something we prevent, that it's not good to do that. If you're going to talk about the things, about how we clean up the board, let's clean it up for real, okay? The president also recently got money. I don't too much, accept too much money from anybody, and if they give it to me, you're not going to get me to sponsor any of your legislation. That's just, that doesn't look good. And especially when you go, um, forum shopping, and you take something that's been in a committee for thirty years, and now all of a sudden you say, "Well, it could be in public health." I want to see where in the public health, I want to see how they administer that bill, 'cause I guarantee you, public health is not going to administer that bill, health and hospital is not going to administer that bill, streets is not going to administer that bill, convention and tourism is not going to administer that bill. The bill is going to be administered by the building division, because that's where it belongs. There's something in the law called fruit of the poison tree. When you gather evidence, and you can get people writing the act, but the, uh, fruit's poisoned because it's done in a legal way, then the judges throw that evidence out. You can't have it in there because you got it the wrong way. Getting this board bill passed this way, and with the thirty years of non-compliance, but lots of promises about, um, and, uh, having black people be included in, um, unions, um, that's embarrassing, that's sad. You, forum shopping is embarrassing and sad, because it's something that this current administration said that that was wrong, and she and I have had many conversations about the prior administration being, the prior, uh, president of Board of Aldermen, not doing that kind of thing, and now you're doing it, and you're trying to act like it's okay. But I did take it to, a lot of my friends are attorneys, not one person saw where it could be in anything except for public safety, 'cause that's where it belongs, and the word mandatory, shall, means you're supposed to. And so, when you are willing to just say, "I don't care, we're just going to do it anyway, and we're going to pass the bill, 'cause this is what I'm for," then we're headed toward a breakdown in everybody having a fair access. I resent it, 'cause I was on public safety, and I didn't, wasn't always on it, but I got put on it. And I wanted to ask my own questions, and I wanted my community to have influence, and they didn't, because the president put it someplace that didn't belong, and the current sponsor is going along with it like it's all right. It's not all right. If we don't follow our rules, then we don't need any rules. If we don't make sure that even when it's a hard call, that you do the right thing, then I don't want to hear it. Don't talk about anybody else, don't talk about prior administrations, don't talk about toxic, 'cause it's toxic to me right now that you shopped a bill that had no business. You don't care? I won't care about your issues. Racism is an issue that I care about, sexism is an issue that I care about. Those are things that I fight for, um, 'cause I have to experience every day. And so when you put pictures out on the internet that's all white, with one black person, if you all don't think that's great, then you're going to vote for it like you did. You don't care, also remember, I'm not going to care about your issues. More and more, this city is going to have more and more problems, because they're not listening. They didn't listen when I first came down here, and we talked about spending all the money downtown, and spending all the money in the Central West End, and that money really, if you, should have been going to North St. Louis. Now, South St. Louis is starting to experience things I never thought I would see in South St. Louis. Graffiti, uh, vacant houses, homeless, all of that stuff is headed to South St. Louis. The people in the central quarter and downtown are wealthy enough that they can get rid of it. We can close down Larry Rice downtown, even though Larry Rice was there before the people came downtown, but they can raise enough, heck, they can get rid of it, instead of saying, "If you want urban experience, this was already here," and everybody has to address the homeless issue, not just North St. Louis. We just keep pushing everything north. And so, when we say to the unions, "No, you have to keep your promise, you have to do things, you have to show us that, uh, you are engaged," and they say, "Oh, we're going to do it," but thirty years later, they haven't done anything, and you all are all okay with just winking and blinking and saying it's okay. Um, another thing I always say to the unions, none of them have any presence in North St. Louis, none of them. All of their offices are off, go down Hampton, go to Elizabeth, go down there. And then you'll see all the unions. Because white men made a decision to put them there and not put them in North St. Louis. So anybody who's interested in being part of the union, you got to travel out your neighborhood to even try to talk to them because they don't care. It's good. And the message that this Board of Aldermen is sending, when you just rubber stamp something and push it along, "Okay for the president to forum shop," which is, and violate the rules, you're sending the message, "That's good. Good old boys, that's all right." I told the alderman from the 11th, he came and talked to me. And I appreciate that. That a lot of times you don't have to think about things if it don't affect you. You just think, "Oh, I'm going along. My father works there and my brother works there." I told you, the Tyus name actually, they worked with the pipe fitters and the plumbers for a long time by the guys of Leroy Tyus. So the Tyus name has been associated, but it's not about Sharon Tyus being able to access something or not. It's about what does the general black population get to access? And how do we treat the general black population for not accessing and being a part of it? And I still don't understand how one section of a union can have one code and another section can have another code. And then they say, "Oh, that's a bad code" because they're part of the same union. And I don't understand, when they first start, when we first had it in public safety, we had the code. And then they came, they didn't say any of the stuff that they're saying now. They said, "Well, if we go to the new code, we'll have to learn new codes and we'll have to buy new books." I don't care. Anybody that's in a profession has to buy new books and learn new things. And I don't want anybody to be running on a project or running on education that happened 10 and 20 years. Every profession, you have to update your education, be it teaching or a lawyer or a doctor. You take CLEs, medical classes. Plumbing people have to update their education. So telling me that you got to buy books and you got to update your education, I want you to do that because things change. Things that we thought were great years ago don't happen to be great anymore. Years ago, we used to require the houses in St. Louis plumb all of their runoff, even from the roofs into the sewer. We now know that's a bad thing. It cost us a lot of money to have that water run directly into the sewer. So now we went back to saying, you can, now any new houses, don't run it into the sewer because that's an added expense on an already expensive MSD bill. So I just want to say again, it is wrong. You may be getting away with this now, but there's going to get a time when you're not going to get away with it that it's not going to be all right. And I want to always be on the right side. The alderman from the 5th says, wearing a mask that says, "Get in good trouble." That comes from John Lewis, who always marched for black people and their rights to the day he died. And he said, "I get in good trouble." And that's what I tend to always do at this Board of Aldermen, is get in good trouble as much as possible, to stand up and speak out for those who can't speak out for themselves. And so that's what I'm doing. I'm getting in good trouble and saying, "You ought to be ashamed of yourself that you think this is all right and that they're going along with doing this at the Board of Aldermen." We should have said, "You have to be able to make some changes." This many black aldermen are not saying no because they just want to be playing politics. We've been, I didn't even know that the alderwoman from the 19th originally, when I started speaking up, she said, "Oh, I'm so glad." And this was a couple of years ago. This is, this is the experience I've had. And this experience I've had, and I'm not applying for the jobs or trying to be part of the union, it's a wrong experience. So all those people who are always talking about, it's something that Nancy Cross wants. And so she's trying to show that she has some power, but you're doing it at an awful expense because you don't know how, you don't know what you're doing with the rest of the city. So you're trying to show you have some power with the unions, but it is wrong. I call on the mayor to veto this bill that comes from the board. And Nancy, you need to learn how to do the rest of your job instead of worrying about these few little unions that are discriminating against black people. That's what you need to do. You need to learn how to be a director of operations and stop writing letters that are lies and not true. Nancy, you keep pushing this. And if it's the administration, shame on you. If it's not, it's just Nancy Cross. You need to veto this, Madam Mayor. This is a bad bill. And it sets a horrible precedent about leaving black people out. And you don't have to believe me. Just have them pull up their record and then see if I'm telling the truth. I request a roll call. And I am adamantly opposed to this bill. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 24th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to, excuse me. I know the alderwoman from the 1st, you know, has concerns. And we discussed, I think, a lot of those concerns in depth last week. I know that she does care for, you know, the facts. And I, so I do want to point out that this bill was recommended by the St. Louis Plumbing Code Review Board, which is a majority-black board. And so I don't want to take up any more of your time with the plumbing code. I'm hoping that this is the last time I ever talk about a plumbing code. So if we could vote this out, I would greatly appreciate it. I ask for your favorable consideration. And with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 24th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 6th, that we third read and finally pass. Board Bill Number 182, committee substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwa, I'm sorry, Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass.
I think that was Bosley.
Oh, okay. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Keys. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Grass. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Grass. 18 aye votes, one no vote, and six voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderman from the 24th and third read and finally pass. Board Bill Number 182, committee substitute as amended.
Board Bill 184, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Orion, President Green, and the following alderperson: Stevens, Gunther, Switzer, Laffey, Vacaro, Clark Hubbard, Peel, Kohn, Rice, Ballmer, Grass, Keys, Walker, Page, Evans, Odenberg, Boyd, and Davis. An ordinance repealing and enacting as set out herein the Lead Poisoning Control Law.
Alderman from the 24th, you are recognized on the third read and finally, final passage of Board Bill Number 184, committee substitute.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 184, committee substitute.
Thank you for all those seconds. It's been moved by the alderman from the 24th. I'm going to say the alderwoman from the 6th. I could hear her loudest. That we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 184, committee substitute. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for STL TV to go back so we can get an instant replay on who seconded it. But, no, I think we've spent a lot of time debating this lead bill again. Seems to me like the, if the folks who have signed on as cosponsors continue to vote yes, then it'll get through. Just notice that as I was walking through City Hall earlier today, back here, you know, there's lead even in this very room that we're sitting in right now. That's the scope of the lead that needs abatement in this city. So I would ask for your favorable consideration.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved. Alderman from the 3rd.
Second all of my comments from the last meeting. There it is.
Thank you, Alderman. It's been moved by the alderman from the 24th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 6th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 184, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Grass. 22 aye votes, one no vote, and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the 24th to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 184, committee substitute.
Board Bill 172, introduced by Alderman Colder. An ordinance approving the petition to establish the Four Hands Brewery CID, establishing the Four Hands Brewery CID, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Four Hands Brewery Community Improvement District, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing certain other actions of city officials and containing the severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number 172.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to third read and final pass Board Bill 172.
Going to say Alderman from the 10th got that second this time around. It's been moved by the alderman from the 7th, seconded by the alderman from the 10th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 172. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a, Community Improvement District is a 1% sales tax in support of Four Hands Brewery's expansion. They're doing a 2.4, sorry, $2.3 million, 24,000 square foot expansion at their brewery in the LaSalle Park neighborhood. I think many of you are familiar with the brewery and the work it does in the community. It's a former Seventh Ward Business of the Year. And with that, I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderman from the 7th, seconded by the alderman from the 10th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 172. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Gracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Laffey. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Kohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Peel. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Grass. 22 aye votes and two no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderman from the 7th to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 172.
Board Bill 160, introduced by Alderman Kohn. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Approusement authorizing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the eighth amended and restated concession agreement with Host International Inc. containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the 25th.
What do we recognize?
We are in search of the alderman from the 25th. Alderman from the 25th, welcome back.
Thank you. I had to take a bio break there on the fourth or fifth hour, wherever we're at now.
You are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 160.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 160.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 25th, seconded by the alderman from the 9th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 160. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Madam President, members of the board, I hope we have the right bill before us. If the alderman from the 25th would yield.
Would the alderman from the 25th yield two questions from the alderwoman from the 1st?
Yes, yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
I want to say, Alderman, if I wasn't persistent, we would have passed the wrong board bill the last time.
No, Alderwoman, you know, I appreciate that.
What I really... Why I took it off the perfection calendar, I just wanted you to tell us a little bit about what we were doing with the city's capital fund out at the airport. So really wasn't a question, just a little bit more narrative so that we can know what's going on out there.
Thank you. So I don't have the list of specific projects, but the, from what I recall of the conversations with the airport director and her staff, these are already approved capital improvements at the airport. They are in line with the potential renovations of the airport as well. So we're not going to be duplicating expenses, but they are necessary. So they're all in Terminal 1 versus Terminal 2. And...
So it's the terminal? It's not any, it's not runway expansion? So, it's the terminal, it's not any, it's not runway expansion, or is it a combination of thereof a vote? Do you want the bill? I have the bill here.
So, 160, 160 is not the capital improvement bill for the airport. 160 is the concession bill out of the airport.
I don't have any questions on that. I'm so sorry.
I thought, there's a lot of board bills going around, but 160 is the, it's the concession agreement on behalf of the airport.
I yield. I don't have questions on 160. I'm sorry.
Right. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Alderman from the first, I think I took this one off the consent calendar. Would the Alderman from the twenty-fifth yield for a couple of questions?
Happily.
Thank you. I promise these are about the concession agreement. I'm fairly certain these are the reasons we're here today, are these airport bills, right, that were, that were late to the, the airport was late to the game. Alderman, so, it's my understanding that this concession agreement is renewing the existing concession agreement for an eighth renewal term. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and just looking at the recitals in this, in this agreement, looks like the original agreement was passed in 1967. Does that sound right?
That sounds accurate.
Okay, so, and this is the eighth renewal?
Correct.
And are you aware, has the airport at any time rebid this contract in the preceding 56 years?
That was a question that I posed before the board bill came before us, before it was actually out at the airport committee, or commission, and asked it again in committee, and there is no recollection of the last time that this had been put out to RFP. There is discussion around why that was the case for this particular renewal, and the rationale that was provided was, one, the timing of it, given the potential airport renovations and construction activity that would be taking place, coupled with the business that was lost and is still recovering from a concession standpoint due to COVID and the pandemic, made it impractical to bid this back out. The concession agreements for Host, in particular for restaurants, it's a rather expensive proposition. When someone is building out a new restaurant or concession stand at the airport, you're talking millions and millions of dollars. So, part of the reason that they didn't put it out to RFP this particular time was due to those reasons, plus the potential lack of interest that would put us at a financial disadvantage from a contractual perspective if no one were to bid on it, and we would have to renegotiate with Host.
Thank you, Alderman. Can you speak to any of the previous seven renewal periods, and why they didn't put it out to bid during those?
You know, I'm only 42 years old, so, and I've only been down here for 14 years, so, no, I cannot go that far back, Alderman.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm voting against this. You know, I've heard there were other groups interested in bidding. I understand that the airport had a challenging few years with the pandemic, as many businesses did, but this is, you know, this just seems really underhanded, that we're giving out another seven-year extension based on the fact that we might renovate the airport, you know, with funds to be determined, with a plan to be determined. All we've got is glossy pictures at this point. I'm going to vote against this. I encourage you all to do the same, because frankly, I think airport concessions could be much improved as a frequent, I guess formerly a frequent user of the airport. I think, you know, we, our offerings pale in comparison to others, and competition is a good thing, and this is what happens when you have a lack of it. You wind up with the same operator getting renewed over and over again and providing a subpar product. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Would the Alderman from the twenty-fifth yield for a question?
The Alderman from the twenty-fifth yield to questions from the Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
You may proceed.
I guess just one kind of practical question. What would be the consequence of not renewing this? I know the Alderman from the seventh does not want to. I'm just curious, does that mean that we have no concessions at all in the airport? Does that mean that the current folks can continue to while they renegotiate contract? I just don't know, and I don't like the having no idea what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't renew it, then, yes, the contract would expire. I'm sure there is administrative clauses in the contract that would allow per administrative, you know, continuance of that contract, but, you know, obviously, it's not something that would put us at an advantage when we go out to bid again, if we're in a situation where we have no vendors that are providing concessions out of the airport.
Thank you. Will the Alderman from the seventh yield for the same question?
The Alderman from the seventh yield to questions from the Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderman from the seventh. Again, I don't know, I'm just asking if you do know what the effect would be of not renewing this. Well, I'm, I'm looking at this 60-plus-page agreement as we stand here, so, if you want to bear with me, I probably can find what would happen, but at the end of the day, I mean, generally, these will have standard provisions where it would basically go month to month or renew for some short-term period. But yeah, I don't know. And, you know, it's not something that's discussed. This has been written about, and, you know, maybe this is a protest vote, but I'm voting against this, because I think it's about time we start looking at new vendors for this airport. Totally understood. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fifth has left the building. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 160. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Grass. Twenty aye votes, one no vote, and four voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the twenty-fifth to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 160.
Board Bill 159 introduced by Alderwoman Negracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Appoirmun Authorizing the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute an agreement in substantially the same form as Exhibit A, attached heretofore with Mid-America Regional Council for the purpose of St. Louis Area Agency on Aging, and subcontractors performing certain home and community-based services, which include teaching health classes to individuals identified by the partner, including data collection, monitoring, reporting, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number 159.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 159.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the eleven, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 159. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the sixth would yield?
Would the Alderwoman from the sixth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the first?
I will.
Alderwoman, can you tell me a little bit about how this board bill will be allocated, what will happen with it? Because my seniors seem to have a hard time trying to find services, so that's why I asked to be taken off, not that I'm opposed to it. I just wanted to get more information on the floor, so I'd appreciate a little bit more explaining about it.
Sure, so this is around $63,000 that will be reimbursed to the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging. Excuse me, they will be doing some direct service providing, and then also contracting out, so if you're interested in ensuring that some of your seniors have coverage, I would definitely recommend it. I'm happy to help facilitate a conversation between you and Annalisa Stover, who leads that agency.
All right, and so, so when they're administering these different programs and things like that, typically, what kind of timeframe should we be looking at? Because I often face very frustrated people that just don't feel like that they can access the system.
Sure, so this particular grant is, goes through some point in 2024, so they haven't started quite doing the direct services yet, but it's something that they're working on.
Okay, and so, a lot of seniors don't do internet, and so, what other kind of ways can we get this information out? Do they do any, because I get stuff from, you know, internet, this people are sending me about it, but my seniors are not on the internet. So, how do we better educate our seniors about accessing these programs, or do you have a suggestion?
Sure, I mean, I think you and I have had these conversations before with respect to, you know, community development, black grant money, and other pools of funding, that our city department should be definitely focusing on, making sure that people who don't have internet access regularly are able to get information through a variety of different mechanisms. I'm not sure exactly what the plan is of the area agency on aging, but again, I'm happy to help facilitate a conversation between you and the Department of Human Services.
Well, what I would like to suggest, we have a number of senior buildings across the city of St. Louis. They could do things, host informational things in the senior buildings. Much is what we could have done with this $500. When you, if you had gone, that first $500, if we had gone to the senior buildings and calmed them down row by row, we would have got a lot of people qualified right away. So, I would suggest all across the city that they would host certain kind of informational teas, or whatever, or cookies and punch, so that seniors could find out these things, because many of the seniors living in the senior building are low to moderate income, and they need help. Now, that won't give to people that are out in their individual homes, but it would be a start, okay? And I also think that we need to make a database that's for seniors, that we do mailings a little, you know, maybe once a year, did you know, or whatever. I know, from the state level, they pass, they send this book to you that talks about all the things that you can access as a senior. I wish we would do something like that more...
Yeah, I, I agree. I've got two low to moderate income senior buildings in the sixth ward, and I know that those folks deserve the same access to grant monies like this that everyone else does.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Need further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman, oh, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
From the sixth, would you take a question, please? It's probably really more so a comment on, piggybacking on Alderwoman Tyus.
Because me having a... Hold on one second. Let me ask.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Alderwoman from the sixth, would you be willing to entertain questions from the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh? You may proceed.
Okay, I guess my question is, what Alderwoman Tyus said, and so, with me having 85% seniors in my community, the challenge has always been to get the information out. Some of them have become computer literate, so they can get the emails and stuff, but some of them haven't. And so, I guess my challenge is, because St. Louis Area for Aging, they don't do well by communicating information out. And so, they have a lot of services that they do, even to the point of home repair, but seniors are not knowledgeable of it. So, in that, I wanted to ask, is it something in that grant that will help them to be better at communicating, to get information to those seniors?
This grant is pretty specific with respect to home-based services for certain healthcare-related classes, like healthy eating, diabetes management, some exercise provisions. I don't see anything in the grant with respect to community outreach, but again, in my limited time left here, I would be happy to help facilitate conversations between anyone and the St. Louis Area Agency on Aging. I think, you know, all city departments can be doing better with respect to outreach, but we also have to be thoughtful about that in our budgeting process, to make sure we're also giving them the tools they need. This is money that came down from the federal government to a nonprofit agency that's being given to the city, so I think there's not a lot of wiggle room in this particular grant funding for some of the things that you and the Alderwoman from the first brought up.
So, do you know if St. Louis Area for Aging is seeking grants to better do communication to the seniors?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware that if they are or not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Alderwomen from the sixth, you are recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the eleven, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 159. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negracia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappy. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Con. Alderman Grass. Twenty-two aye votes.
By, by your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the sixth to third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 159.
Board Bill 168 introduced by Alderman Con and Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Appoirmun Authorizing, an appropriation consisting of funds received in the city's capital fund pursuant to ordinance number 60419, as amended by ordinance number 61250, representing one-half of the operating balance of the general revenue, I'm sorry, of the general fund from the preceding fiscal year, for the purposes of funding capital improvement totaling $24,490, as herein after detailed and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Is he in the building?
I'm here.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 168.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move that we finally pass Board Bill 168.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 168. Alderman, you may proceed.
I am open for discussion at this point. If anyone would like for me to yield to questions, I am open to that, but at this point, I'd like to continue the meeting moving forward.
Alderwoman from the first.
Madam President, members of the board, if he could just tell me a little bit more, if the Alderman from the twenty-fifth would yield?
Would the Alderman from the twenty-fifth yield to questions from the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes, I will yield to questions.
You may proceed.
Alderman, how do you spell Shane?
S-H-A-N-E.
I'm sorry. Alderman, can you just tell me a little bit about the improvements or the...
I think I did that when I was explaining Board Bill 160, so I won't re-raise that.
But then you told me it didn't belong to that, so I don't want to confuse the people, so just go...
I know, yeah. No, 160 was the concession agreement, 168 is the capital improvement funds, which I already elaborated on earlier in our meeting. Oh, this is, this is not even, I'm sorry. So, this is the capital, the citywide capital funds. You guys, this has been quite the meeting. My apologies. I'm pulling it up.
I'm not, I'm not hurrying you. I'm sitting here, but I'm about to faint.
No, no, it's not.
I haven't eaten all that bread and stuff that you guys had.
It's the peanut gallery over here, Alderwoman. It's not...
Well, you peanut galleries, please leave him alone.
So, the exhibit that's in the board bill, Alderwoman, there's roughly $24 million that's being spent in this board bill. There's arterial paving, Calm Street Project, bridges actually got removed from this particular exhibit, and then we have boiler replacements at our recreation centers, renovations at Zoolard Market, replacing ambulances, vehicles for the police department, there's... for the police department. There's municipal buildings that need to be addressed. And my understanding, and the Alderwoman from the 27th can correct me if I'm wrong, because she's in these meetings as well, but we are obliged to pay for capital improvements for the courts. If we don't, they can put that item into their bill, and we would be mandated to pay for that underneath state statute. So we have some basic capital improvements over to the Civil Courts Building and the Carnegie Courthouse in here related to their fire systems or fire suppression and alarm systems. And then there's additional city vehicles that are in here as well.
Thank you very much, all of which are sorely needed, along with a lot more capital improvements. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderwoman. I will add, the Budget Director during these discussions frequently reminded me that this is a particular issue where we always have a greater need than the funds that are available. And there's just never enough to go around to address all of the issues that we have as a city. But, you know, certainly, there is a lot of due diligence here. And also, you know, the Citizen Advisory Committee also had recommendations, some of which are not reflected in this budget. But, you know, we are trying to work through, addressing some of those concerns through ARPA spending and otherwise as well. But-
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 28th, you are recognized to close.
25th.
25th. Sorry. It's been a long day.
It has been a very long day, Madam President. I renew my motion to finally pass Board Bill 168.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 168. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page. Alderwoman Negrasia. Alderman Colder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderman Lappi. Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard. Thank you. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Grass. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Grass. Twenty-four I votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 25th to third read and finally pass Board Bill 168. All other business being suspended. Oh, report of engrossment.
Board Bill 138, 155, 131, 160, 161, 159, 176, 144, 164 committee sub, 168, 175 floor sub, 93, 182 committee sub as amended, 184 committee sub, and 172.
All other business being suspended. The President shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar. Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by, I could not-
The 11th.
11. That we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar. Any discussion? Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to add my name to Resolution 181 and 182.
Please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to move that we embank Resolution 182.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we embank Resolution 182. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need further discussion? Alderwoman from the 14th.
I would like to have my name added to Resolution 178 and 179 if it hasn't already been done. Okay. It's been a long meeting, you know.
Madam Clerk, I would like to be added to 181 as well. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 11th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 180 introduced by Alderwoman Rice, approval of the 2023 Garden Side Subdivision Special Business District budget.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution number 180.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to ask for unanimous consent on Resolution 180.
Hearing no objection, you may proceed.
Thank you. This is, this is a budget produced by the Garden Side Subdivision Special Business District. It's one of their requirements that they come back in front of us and produce this budget. And I thank this group for getting this to me this year. I appreciate, I appreciate that word. So I would like to move to adopt Resolution 180.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 9th, that we adopt a Resolution number 180. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading of resolution.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, February the 8th, Streets will have a meeting, will continue their meeting from Monday at 10:00 a.m. via webinar. Public Safety will have a meeting at 1:00 p.m. via webinar. I'm sorry, I don't know if I said 10:00 a.m. for Streets continuation from Monday. Public Safety will have a meeting at 1:00 p.m. via webinar. Thursday, February the 9th, 2023 Convention and Tourism will have a meeting at 9:00 a.m. via webinar. The special committee to the transition to the 14 wards will have a meeting at 11:00 a.m. via webinar. Friday, February the 10th, 2023, full board meeting 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to make sure that I thank the staff and STLTV. We've been here for a long time today. They've been here for longer than us, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the 27th.
Yes, Madam President and the Board. I wanted to, I did not want to be remiss in not recognizing Ms. Ollie Stewart. Today, they named a street after her. And so I wanted to recognize her for her long term of serving our communities and our seniors. And so everybody should welcome, I mean, congratulate her on her street name.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Just really quickly, I should have just included folks as special guests this morning, but there have been some really hateful attacks on LGBTQ plus Missourians and some really heinous bills being heard today. And since we are all here in session doing this important work, we are not able to go and be in person and defend these communities and these people who deserve to have free lives here in our state. So just a shout out to everyone who was able to travel to Jefferson City today to stand up for trans kids, for LGBTQ people being included in education. There's enough room in Missouri for all of us. And so we love you. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Any further discussion? Any further announcements? I am canceling the Transition Committee for, that was regularly scheduled for 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, and we will be rescheduling to a later date. Any further announcements? Right, Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President. I, the peanut gallery is hard at work today. I would like to move that we excuse the alder persons from the 19th and 28th wards for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we excuse the aforementioned alder people. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderman from the 25th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
But I don't want to. Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adjourn until Friday, what is the month now? February 10th at 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 25th, seconded by the Alderman from the 10th, that we adjourn until Friday, February 10th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.